To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards and proclamations. Okay. Citizens Forum, anyone who would like to address the commission? Just come to the podium and give your name and address, please. Okay. We don't have any takers. Okay. We have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll go on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 19, 2017, and item 6.2, adopt resolution number 17-7465, expressing support for an authorizing staff to submit a grant application to the Dane G. Hanson Foundation for Bicycle Education Evaluation and Encouragement under the Healthcare Objective for Healthier Communities.
Okay. Is there anything on the consent agenda? Anyone would like to, any commissioner would like to pull? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, move for approval of the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Administration, item 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize preparation, distribution, and public notice of final draft of revisions to the Salina Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Mr. Scragg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As I believe you recall, on May 15th, you considered four requests for amendments to the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan and provided staff direction on each of those. Staff has prepared a draft for your further consideration. I would note that it is not in final form yet. There are still final revisions to be made, and then ultimately it will need to go to the other taxing entities that would be impacted by tax rebates for their ratification. Public notice would then be published for your consideration and returned to you one more time. The items of note with respect to the requests that were received and the changes that have been made are, first of all, removing the downtown property identified for redevelopment through tax increment financing as part of the Star Bond project from the neighborhood revitalization area, so that we don't have an attempt to capture that tax increment and also rebate that increment. That would not work. Secondly, there is a request for creation of an additional category that would receive a heightened percentage of property rebate and an extended term for those purposes. And staff provided you some sample language for your consideration at the last meeting on criteria that might be applied. Since that time, based on the feedback that you provided, we developed five criteria to elaborate on what we have proposed to be called eligible projects of exceptional community significance. In the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan draft language says that "Applications for designation as a project of exceptional community significance shall be subject to City Commission review and approval utilizing the following criteria: One, provision of a minimum of 15 housing units or 40,000 square feet of commercial space; Two, demonstration of a significant blighting influence of the building and respective property on the surrounding neighborhood; Three, significant mitigation of blight demonstrated by minimum project investment of $10 million; Four, preservation and redevelopment of a national, state, or locally designated historic landmark; Five, demonstrated vacancy for a minimum of five years or under utilization for a minimum of five years." Excuse me. It jumped pages on me. "Demonstrated by significantly low levels of residential and/or retail commercial occupancy; primary and accessory storage uses excluded; levels of employment per square foot; employee wage rates relative to the Salina County average wage rate for non-retail and/or retail; commercial sales activity per square foot." So we're trying to create some benchmarks by which a project could be identified as being significantly blighting, significantly large in investment, and having a significant impact. The third criteria was adding property generally described as being located south and west of the intersection of North Ohio Street and I-70, and within the current city limits of Salina, adding that to the Neighborhood Revitalization Area. Fourthly, adding properties bounded by Iron Avenue, Indiana Avenue, Gipson Avenue, and Delaware Avenue to the Neighborhood Revitalization Area. And you should have a map of that. That was the area that we discussed that was proposed for multifamily development. And then lastly, I just noted the fact that there were miscellaneous clarifications and edits to better communicate the original intent of the plan, not to make a substantive change in the application of the plan, but to better clarify the intent and the wording of the plan. I would also note a couple of other things. Over time, we've added areas, and we've called them Area 1 and 1A, and 2 and 2A, and I think we're up to seven now if we take that approach. So if, coming out of this meeting, we have a sense of the areas that you wish to be in the Neighborhood Revitalization Area, staff's intention is to consolidate that into one attached map that better articulates that, and that will result in additional edits to all those references to Areas 1A, 1, and 1A, 2, and 2A, et cetera. Specifically, as it relates to the area in the southwest corner of I-70 and Ohio Street, I want to call to your attention that that would be eligible for industrial development or industrial and commercial development in that location. There are some distinctions area by area, whether it's residential or commercial and industrial, and the intention with that location in terms of its zoning, as well as the proposed development there, would be an industrial, commercial use. And then lastly, actually, Mr. Erickson from Foley Tractor raised a question that called attention to a wording change that we hadn't identified until the staff report went out. In Section 7, Subsection 4, there's language that doesn't reflect the actual intent of the application of the program or our past application. It indicates that if a property improvement is not substantially complete on the next January 1 following submittal of an application, there shall be no rebate for that year, which has been our past practice, but it then goes on to say reducing the eligible period by one year. The intention is recognition that the county, the project has to be complete on January 1 for the county appraiser to then appraise it at its increased value for the increment to be calculated, for the rebate to be calculated, and then for that tax payment to increase and be eligible for rebate in that calendar year. So the intention is that if that improvement isn't complete and the assessment is not adjusted by January 1, there won't be a rebate in that same calendar year, but the 10-year period will start at the point that the assessment is revised. So that can be cleaned up just by striking that insertion that's currently there that says it reduces the eligible period by one year. So if that's acceptable, it would be staff's intention to make that edit as well. So as I mentioned, what you have before you is another red line draft. If it's acceptable to you, or if we can finalize any remaining edits, then we will prepare that, distribute it to the other taxing entities for their response, and hopefully consent, and then return it to you for final action. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Questions?
What were the most important features, in summary after our last discussion, that merited adding the property off of Easter High? I'm trying to find the exact description of it here. Just had it.
On Delaware.
On Delaware, yep. Thank you.
I think that came out of the discussion that we had at the last meeting about that particular neighborhood, some desire on the part of the person that requested the change to be able to develop the property there on the south end, the property that butted Iron Street for multifamily, and the fact that the boundary was currently in the center of the street. I think another factor was that that is in the area of change identified in our comprehensive plan, so in terms of an area that's been identified by the comprehensive plan in terms of need of redevelopment and support, that's kind of the intent of the area of change. So it seemed consistent with the comp plan and seemed to facilitate further redevelopment in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to authorize preparation, distribution, and public notice on item 7.1.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we authorize preparation, distribution, and public notice of the final draft of revisions to the Salina Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, including item 7.4 to strike some language from that section, per Mr. Scragg.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve preparation, distribution, and public notice on the final draft of revisions to the Salina Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, International Energy Conservation Code, Uniform Mechanical Code, and International Residential Code, 7.2A, First Reading Ordinance Number 17-10890. 7.2B, declare compelling public purpose exists to allow second reading on the same day, and 7.2C, Second Reading Ordinance Number 17-10890.
Mr. Scragg again.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to start by acknowledging that I provided some additional information at your place. There is additional, same copies of what I provided you available up here for the public. I believe Ms. Wickx was able to distribute it to those she saw come in, but anyone from the public that is interested, you're welcome to come grab a copy of, kind of a summary of the, some information that we'll be discussing. So with that, I'm sure you recall last fall, October 3rd, you adopted a number of ordinances that adopted all of our building codes, the building code, residential code, plumbing code, mechanical, electrical, fire, and the energy conservation code. Prior to that time, we did not have an energy conservation code that we had adopted in that form. Then you may also recall that as the effective date of that code adoption approached near January 1, there was discussion about a request to delay the effective date of that, which did occur, and the effective date was rolled over to April 1st of this year. And so since April 1, those codes have been in effect. We have, we did create kind of a phased-in approach where if we received building permit applications prior to April 1, they could continue under the prior codes, the 2006 codes, and with respect to the energy code, without being subject to the energy code the basis that they made continual progress and that their building permit didn't expire. In preparation for that cycle of adopting the codes, the Development Services Department, and more specifically Building Official Jim Brown, worked with a number of building advisory board committees that were formed on each one of the different topics, and it's been estimated that he held over 60 subcommittee and advisory committee meetings as they worked through those different codes. As you may also recall, we have adopted some local amendments. Over time, we did adopt quite a few local amendments, and we've tried to get away from that a little bit to become more standardized, and then additionally, we have to justify all of our local amendments to the State Fire Marshal's office when we send our codes to them for their review and approval. So now that the 2012 energy code has become effective, it appears that implementation, both on our part, as well as the design community and the development community, is resulting in a higher level of detail in terms of becoming familiar with and administering the codes, everything from plan preparation to our staff review, and then ultimately what that means in terms of construction according to the international energy code. Staff's had some preliminary conversations, primarily with Jeff Gillum and his mechanical engineering sub, to become a little bit more familiar with what they see as the changes and the significance of those changes. And out of that conversation, there was some discussion about Mr. Gillum approaching the building advisory board and sharing some of his observations that he raised with us, and his suggestion that maybe the building advisory board should consider the 2009 codes rather than the 2012 and the differences between those two codes. I would tell you that Mr. Brown's no longer with us. He's moved back to the Kansas City area. Sean Pilcher, sitting next to me, is our interim building official, and I have no intention of putting him on the hot seat tonight and making him answer detailed questions about the international energy code, but Sean has begun the process of trying to prepare a side-by-side comparison of the 2009 and the 2012 energy codes to get, in anticipation of questions coming up, and a desire to make a comparison. So Mr. Gillum approached the building advisory board at their June 13th meeting. Unfortunately, there wasn't a quorum present, so no action can be taken at that time. He did make a presentation to them, and a copy of his written handouts was attached to your staff report. And the members in attendance couldn't take action and obviously didn't vote, but they did seem receptive to the concerns being raised and the suggestion that further review be done regarding the energy code and the comparison between the 2012 and 2009 versions of the code. And so Sean has begun that process, and as we've begun plan review, we're also then identifying the items that need to be addressed in a plan review, and that's starting the conversation. Out of concern for the length of the time that it may take the building advisory board to meet and consider it and make a recommendation, bearing in mind that they meet monthly, Mr. Gillum then, I believe, approached the city manager, suggesting that a moratorium in the enforcement of the 2012 codes be considered by you to effect a timeout essentially, so that the building advisory board would have time to take it under consideration, staff would have time to prepare a more detailed presentation for their consideration. And so as a result of Mr. Gillum's request, as well as other members of the design community and the development community also making, ratifying his request, staff prepared the attached moratorium ordinance for your consideration. It affects a 120-day moratorium on the implementation of the energy code. We recognize that we'll have to be mindful of getting through that entire process in terms of preparing the report, presenting it to the building advisory board, timing their review and comments, and being able to come back to you so that the 120 days doesn't lapse. With respect to our strategic plan, the items that I identified that it might be considered consistent with was that Salina would be a city that's exciting to live in and thriving both economically and socially. It will be a community of mixed-use quality development and redevelopment, that will provide the highest quality services consistent with your direction, and that will maintain growth and development policies that are updated to reflect current conditions and desired growth. There's no identifiable fiscal impact on the city as it relates to either the energy codes or the moratorium on the energy codes. And so the ordinance before you adopts a 120-day moratorium, the options we've identified for your consideration are to approve the ordinance as-is, amend the ordinance as you deem appropriate. That could be a different number of days, or it could provide some different direction. You could postpone consideration of the ordinance to a specified date. That would result in the 2012 energy codes remaining in effect and being applied to current and future applications, or you could vote to deny the ordinance, resulting in the energy conservation code remaining in effect. In light of the feedback from the development community and the amount of conversation that it's generated, that's the reason that staff prepared the ordinance for your consideration, and we stand ready to implement a moratorium if that's your choice. The staff is prepared to further staff the topic through and support the building advisory board and the city commission. And then lastly, given the sense of urgency from the development community, you may wish to make a motion to declare a compelling public interest and take second reading today as well. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have, with the support of Mr. Pilcher as well.
Mike, can you quickly go over the supplemental information you had that addressed the cities that adopted the codes?
I forgot about that. Thank you. In addition to the information that Mr. Gillum provided, staff was able to find on the Kansas Corporation Commission's website, and frankly, I'm not sure why the Kansas Corporation Commission's tracking codes, but they provided two different documents that summarize code adoptions as of January of 2016, and then again, June of 2016. And so the information I put at your seats and the information that's made available to the public is a summary of the communities that have adopted various codes, but in there you can find a column for the energy conservation code on that first page. You can also find a similar column, the last column on the right, in the subsequent pages. And then lastly, I prepared a quick summary as the last page of the document, and that probably cuts through the chase. There's three versions of the energy conservation code, 2006, 2009, and 2012, and the communities that adopted each are broken out there, and then it's noted whether they have amendments as well. So the 2006 energy conservation code was adopted by Paola, it was adopted by Lenexa with amendments. The 2009 code was adopted by Douglas County, it was adopted by Kansas City, Manhattan, and Topeka with amendments. The 2012 code was adopted without amendments by DeSoto, Hillsborough, Johnson County, Merriam, Mission, Ottawa, and Roland Park, and was adopted with amendments by Lawrence, Leewood, Alatha, Overland Park, Prairie Village, and Shawnee. And bear in mind, that is not information that we gathered directly, and it is, well, one round of it is January, the other is as of June, so it may not be entirely current, but those are the ones that we were able to find fairly quickly in terms of other communities and what they've done. I would also note that some of these reports call out other communities and note the fact that they have not adopted the energy code. So it's a combination of the information we were able to gather fairly shortly, in short order. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, one other thing is, in this, when we received the request, we said we would schedule the conversation with you and place an action item that you could work from. Certainly, we don't, we're not out in the field doing the construction, so we did indicate we'd rely on the folks that do that to provide the case of cost impacts and so forth, and so I expect you'll get some input there. And the other thing is, as the framework that Mike put together, the 120-day moratorium, that's a starting point. That's a fill-in-the-blank on the assumption that it could take a while with the building advisory board. And the thought would be, really, the contemplation thought is, do you keep the 12 as-is? Do you amend the 12? Do you go back to the 9, which we had not adopted? We went straight to the 12, as-is or with amendments as well. You could go with the recommended moratorium. You could go without a moratorium. You could go with something in between. So you have all those options, but we wanted to give you a starting point. So I want you to, I don't want you to feel like you don't have options to discuss if you want to do that. So appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
What does it mean for the planner or the builder out there during the course of this moratorium? Are they working under the 2012s because we passed those? Or are they sit and wait and see?
Right. If you said today, hey, building advisory board, well, if you said, we're fine the way it is, don't do anything, or if you said, hey, building advisory board, go look at it, but we're not going to approve a moratorium, the moratorium would be a moratorium on the application of the code for 120 days. So if you didn't approve the moratorium, the 2012 code is still in effect while the building advisory board's contemplating. If you do approve the moratorium, it would not be applied at all, so there would not be a supplemental energy efficiency code in its time. You'd have a gap in time in which no energy efficiency code is being applied while, say, a permit application comes in. So whether that ends up being four weeks, six weeks, 120 days, whatever, that's what would happen.
And I would add to that, the approach that we took with the extension and the effective date to April 1st was that building permit application submitted prior to that, that effective date, were able to submit under the old codes and can have a permit issued and continue to build. So I think we would have to take the same approach if a moratorium owner effect, so that you don't, you're not designing a building, and then the moratorium's lifted, and now all the energy codes are applied to it. The likely approach would be up to that 120-day deadline, then. It would not be subject to any energy codes, and we would issue the permit and continue to inspect it on that basis.
Did we have a prior energy code prior to the 2012? Did we adopt a 2006 or a 2009?
No, we did not.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions. What would be the ramifications on existing projects? Because I'm assuming that there are some engineers and designers and construction people that have designed to the 2012 code. Would they be free to then abandon that or continue as they choose?
I would expect so, and when you say abandonment, that may be in submission of revised plans to account for the changing of vestibules and different aspects that were required as part of the energy conservation code requirements.
Okay. And we're just talking specifically about the energy code today. We're not talking about any of the other code issues. Okay. And I guess that, you know, as we go forward, if we do adopt a moratorium, I guess that it would be helpful, I think, for all of us to know if there's a specific aspect that's difficult to implement, or troublesome, or burdensome, or whatever, and how these other communities have amended their codes to address that, or what exactly these amendments address.
Right. I would anticipate that if we take up consideration of a different code, those are the type of things that staff will need to staff through and the building advisory board would take up. My limited knowledge of the energy conservation code includes the fact that there is what's called com check software, and so it creates a, you fill it out with details about the project, and it creates a scoring system. So one of the concerns would be factoring local amendments into that review and scoring approach. That's not to say that it couldn't be done, but we would need to give a thorough review to any local amendments.
Concerned, when the codes were, the implementation of the codes were, was delayed from January to April, the issue then was to accommodate projects that were already underway.
Actually, I think the issue then was a combination of some that felt like they weren't fully aware of January 1 being the effective date, and accommodating projects that had not been designed to the point of getting the benefit of that approach of if your permit's in prior to the effective date, being able to continue under the old codes.
Correct. But the issue then wasn't a request to amend the codes. It was just to delay.
It was just to delay the effective date.
So this conversation should have taken place last year, not now, I would think.
Could have taken place then, yes.
If a delay is needed for implementation, I mean, if there's still enough backlog of projects, I could see it would not be unreasonable to delay implementation, but I'm just wondering why, if there were concerns about the content of the code that wasn't addressed when we went through this before.
I can entirely speak to that. I think some of the public that wish to address you may be able to. I think, as I mentioned in my staff report, I think the staff review, the presentation, the conversation that took place leading up to it was probably at less of a level of detail than we now find ourselves at as we implement and plans have to be designed and reviewed. I don't know if that is what caused the heightened attention and the request to come in now.
From my understanding, that Mr. Brown said he had focus groups, and he met with a lot of people, and he was reviewing these, and it sounded as though these had all been vetted with those who would have to interact with them.
Correct. I don't know the level of detail that, in terms of Mr. Brown's presentation, or do I know the level of detail at which the attendees did their own review and brought concerns to that conversation, as much as everyone may have just been aware that it was coming. And now that it's here, we're having the conversation.
Yeah. One thing to note, too, Jim was very clear that we were talking at the time about the 2012 code. There wasn't any, should not have been any confusion about which code. And there are differences between the 9 and the 12, which is what's brought the question up.
And any major safety issues that would be lost, or safety concerns by not, or by dropping back to 2009?
Not that we're aware of. It's more of a conservation measures and levels of energy conservation, but we could answer that question better after we do a side-by-side comparison of the two.
Mike, for clarification, too, does this code apply only to commercial projects?
There are some residential aspects as well.
So the purpose of an energy efficiency code, and it may depend on what audience you are, but one purpose would be to reduce overall operating costs to the owner of the property. If it's a commercial project, I'm doing my own project, then one could argue I kind of get to make that choice. If it's a spec building or a spec home or something, then that's going to be passed on down the line, but, and then the other side would be, isn't it just a good thing to be more energy efficient? However, as we all know, when you have, when you deal with energy efficiency, there are upfront costs, and then you're talking about market and so forth. So that's, you just try to balance that, and I think that's part of the contemplation between the 9 and the 12 codes, is the difference in the costs and the effect on efficiencies. 12 takes you further.
And I guess I would share some of the feedback I've had, in addition to what Mr. Gage has described, is a comparison between what we're doing in Salina and what's occurring in our peer communities, and whether 2012 is more onerous than 2009 or no code in another community. And that, I only call that to your attention because that is a policy decision for you to make.
Was there any comments? And I may just ask you, Mr. Scragg, to just... And I may just ask you, Mr. Skrag, to just kind of compare the process that we went through with Mr. Brown in this two-year process of getting, gathering, and really allowing everybody to be a part of this process versus maybe the way we did it in the past? Can you just?
Sure. When I arrived, going on 11 years ago now, it was more, the codes would come out, they'd be published, and staff would look at them and kind of summarize what the changes were. But we made a very deliberate effort to be more transparent and more inclusive in terms of that committee process and forming Building Advisory Board subcommittees to review it and solicit public input. And frankly, Mr. Brown took it to another level with 60 subcommittee meetings. And, you know, some topics generate a lot more participation and conversation than others. The plumbing code, without a doubt, and that's not unique to Salina. The Uniform Plumbing Code compared to the International Plumbing Code is an ongoing debate. But Mr. Brown, I think the 60 subcommittee meetings speak to the level of, you know, involvement that he was trying to accomplish. Now, that wasn't 60 just on the energy code. That was all of them.
Right. And that was my understanding. My understanding was, is that anybody that had any concerns or any input had sufficient time, notice, and opportunity to provide that feedback in order, so that we hopefully would be able to implement a code and then move forward from there. Are these, and in that regard, one of the concerns is that the 2012 energy code has significantly higher costs than the 2009? Is that the?
I can't say certainty. I think that is a concern that's raised. I can't speak to the details of one compared to the other.
Okay. Would it be, let's just say the answer to that is yes. Because, I mean, that's kind of what it sounds like, is that cost is a concern in time and preparation. Would it be accurate to assume that the 2012, and I'm just going to pick out here, the 2012 edition of the International Residential Code would have higher costs than the 2009 International Residential Code? I mean, isn't typically, aren't these a little more, don't they typically incur more? I mean, they don't get less onerous, do they?
I hate to perpetuate the stereotype, but yeah. On occasion, there will be, you know, some change that actually represents relief or a lessening. But for the most part, they become more and more detailed each code cycle.
You know what? I have a few more questions, but I would, my questions would be better if I heard from, more directly from what some of the concerns are. So I'll hold those questions for, after the public comment.
Anyone else on the commission? Okay, any public comment?
Commissioners, Jeff Gillum. First of all, as you probably know, the 2012, 2009, whatever, the codes are very extensive. And we're not even going to touch the iceberg of everything in those codes tonight. And John, as you mentioned, yeah, there's been a lot of committee meetings, and I know there was a lot of debate at that time. But my real thrust, as we start to learn these codes as they're implemented, is if you look at our neighboring cities, Salina wants to be competitive, Salina wants to be economical, we want to encourage development. And right now, as it sits, of our neighboring competitive communities, we are the most restrictive at 2012. We've done some modeling. On a given $1 million project, you're looking at 10% to 15% higher cost just to meet those codes. Some of those codes are not realistic. They're not reasonable. And there's a reason. When you look at your list, almost everybody that's adopted, whether it's 2006, 2009, or 2012, there are with amendments. Salina has no amendments. Amendments tell you there's a problem with the code, or there's an issue, or something needs to be resolved. So we have no amendments, and we have problems with 2012 code. In that given project I was talking about, a million-dollar project, 10%, 15%, you're looking at about $100,000 to $150,000 that's just being spent to meet the new code, with a payback of about $1,000 to $1,500 a year. That's a 100-to-50-year payback, which is not reasonable. Most owners, most developers would not do that. We, as design professionals, work with our clients, pick and choose those energy efficiencies that make sense and is a payback to the owner. And so this code, though, mandatories that we follow each and every item. And that's what we have a real exception to. There are several things we'd have to go through in great detail in the 2012 that vary greatly from the 2009. And again, a little bit of is shell shock, Salina has no energy code, to now the most restrictive. And again, if you look at the cities and towns, we're talking Kansas City, we don't compete with Kansas City, Leewood, Lenexa, all those, although they do have the 2012 with amendments. If you look at the ones Wichita, Hudson, Hayes, Topeka, Manhattan, which is our neighboring committees we compete with, again, they're 2009 or none at all. Wichita has not adopted one. There's probably a reason. They're encouraging development. They're not trying to restrict development. You know, as a designer, I want to be energy efficient. But for my owner, I want him to be competitive. I want it to have a good payback. So we're picking and choosing the cost-effective things, the energy efficiency items that make sense and, you know, pays on his bottom line. There's a lot of other issues that I can go over, but I would ask that you vote for the moratorium. We're really getting into it. We're finding there's a lot of issues that don't make sense. We need some local amendments, whether it's the 12 or the nine. And I don't think we've had enough time to really study it. I know it's been delayed several times. We've actually done, worked on projects on the 2012 for several years because we're working in different states. And we're seeing some of the local amendments that make a lot of sense. And again, because Salina doesn't have any, we need time to really implement those amendments and do it right. So again, I ask for your vote to put a moratorium on the IECC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
My name is Donnie Mars. I'm with DMA Architects. One of the things, and I used to chair the Building Advisory Board and took through the prior set of codes, the 2006 codes, through the whole process of reviewing and hearing of codes. One of the things that's not been brought up today is the fact that we review these codes, but we don't particularly apply them to a real building situation until they're adopted. So we get a real building situation, now we're applying the codes to that real building situation, and we're realizing that, okay, now we've got to do this, we've got to do this. We figure out all the things that we have to do differently, which add to the cost of the building, as Jeff is saying. So the review process of the codes is looking at what's the difference between one code to the next code. It's not applying that difference to a real building project. Now that we've, are into the 2012, applying it to a real building situation, we're able to see what the differences are in cost. One of the items that's required is commissioning on a building system. And you probably say, okay, what is commissioning? What does that mean? Well, it's all based on how many BTUs of mechanical system that you have. And once you exceed a certain level, then commissioning is mandatory. It requires you to have a third party come in and physically review all of the work that was done on the site to determine whether or not the building envelope and the mechanical system meet the criteria as outlined in the code. That can be a very expensive process. We're talking about anywhere, depending on the size of the building. Give you an example, St. Elizabeth's Catholic Church, large building, most large buildings like that, we do mandate commissioning. And in that case, we had the owner pay for the commissioning. We're talking about $15,000, and that's been over 10 years ago for that particular building. That building was about $2.5 million to construct at that point in time. But that commissioning requirement, we brought an engineer out of Topeka to do that work. It took him about two and a half weeks to complete the work that he had to do, both off-site and on-site, to do that commissioning. A lot of the smaller jobs that we're dealing with, commissioning's not, it's not necessary. It's not required. We do a lot of testing and balancing, which means we test the system to make sure that it meets the criteria that it was designed for. And then we balance the airflow so that we get the airflow equally or to the CFM that our engineer specified was supposed to be delivered. But we don't go through a full commissioning. So some of the amendments we're talking about making have to do with, let's look at the commissioning requirements, and let's apply them to Salina as to how we would typically do a building and how we deal with that. Let's look at lighting controls. Let's look at the issues with regard to the thermal envelope. What are we typically doing with that in Salina, and how does that relate to the code? Those are some, a few of the examples. But I do think we need some time. Mr. Skrag indicated that we have to submit all of these revisions to the state fire marshal. I believe those are revisions that relate to life safety, not necessarily the insulating value of the envelope of the building. Am I correct?
That is a really good question. In the past, they've asked us to explain our plumbing code amendments. So I'm a little up in the air as to what they think is their purview.
That, I guess, is yet to be seen. But those are my comments. And I think that, yes, I was up here in January asking for you to delay a part of this, part of the code implementation. This moratorium allows us to apply what we've learned on the buildings we're working on now under 2012. So I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mars.
Brendan Hughes, Harbin Construction. From a contractor standpoint, I think one of the things that I'd like to mention is that when a project goes over budget, the first thing we, as the contractor, are asked to do is a value engineering of that project. And that's always a couple of the things that are first to go, are the commissioning and any lead certification requirements. Then we obviously go into the mechanical systems and electrical. So it's a huge deal when budgets are, you know, tight anyway, to add these types of scenarios. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Jamie, for being so thoughtful. I'm Charles Renz, Jones Gillum Renz Architects. You know, I agree with everything that Jeff and Donnie have already stated. But one thing I want to point out, too, with the energy code, the 2012 energy code, is it's really not conducive to every project. For instance, I've got a project right now, Salina Stadium, a new press box. The press box is used for soccer games, for football games, and that's pretty much it. It's used evenings a few times a year. Really used on the nicest, most comfortable days of the year. And it's a facility that's really shut down most of the time. To me, a common sense approach is to say that, you know, meeting all of those insulation requirements, all those energy requirements for a facility that is not, you know, that's used so sparingly, and when it is used, it's used with it wide open, you know, with windows. As the code is right now, there is no, nothing that allows, you know, Sean or the city, the building official, to, you know, to use a little bit of a common sense approach with that. So I think when we talk about amendments, that's one thing, is to really define where is it, you know, where are we required to follow the code to the letter of the law, and where is it common sense to back off? So, thanks.
Thank you.
James Hall, 1525 East North Street. If Gary Hobbie was here, or maybe some of the other staff members can help me remember, a few years ago, there was a section in the structural portion of a code that added about 20% to the cost of a pre-engineered metal building, or a conventional design building. We sat down with the staff here, went through the process, and discovered that the older code had the higher restriction in it, and the newer code had actually gone back and looked at that and said, you know what, gang? When we did this, there were so many people that complained, and there was emphasis put on that that wasn't really required, that the code officials came back and ratcheted that back down. We were at the time about to build a 60,000-square-foot addition. And by working with city staff and going through that, and taking language from the newer code and adopting it into what was current, we saved about 20% on the overall cost of that building. So when you think about these, and when you talk to code officials that teach the classes, they will tell you that you will see ebbs and flows in how these requirements go. There are times when the group will meet, and they'll have a huge change, and it'll ramp stuff up, and then they'll come back for the next round and say, oh, maybe we, maybe we got a little too aggressive there. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to review what everybody has said, and we're going to back that down. We've not ever had an energy code in Salina. And I'm thinking through projects that we've done and projects that we're looking at. And if we're faced with 15% to 20% cost increases because of this, we're going to have to stand back and look really hard about where we do that. I would encourage you to please listen carefully to what Jeff and Donnie have said. They're studying this every day. They are working with their engineers. They really understand what these costs are. And I don't want to see Salina lose out because we are not competitive. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anyone else?
If I may add one thing, and admittedly, this may be a little self-serving on the part of staff, but as you discuss this, if you're inclined to reconsider the 2012 code adoption and want staff to provide additional feedback, review, facilitate conversations, I think it's going to be easier on staff if there is a moratorium than an acknowledgement that we want to do that with no timeline and the code still in effect. That's going to create a sense of urgency that, given our current staffing, it may be difficult to balance all that. But having said that, we will do whatever it is of your preference to carry out.
Could you rephrase that a little differently? So your preference?
Gary, let me be more direct. Gary retires July 7th. Sean's serving in an interim role. I'm serving an interim role. And so I think the first question for you is, if you're resolved that the 2012 Energy Conservation Code is the code for us, then that's a pretty easy answer. But if you're open to the need for additional conversation and additional investigation and reporting, then staff's prepared to do that. But if we're doing that while the Energy Conservation Code remains in effect, that's going to create a sense of urgency on our part, as well as the development community's part, that's going to be hard to manage. So if you're, if you're inclined to reconsider the issue, a moratorium would help staff catch our breath to be able to staff it through for you.
But that's a moratorium with it in effect, or a moratorium with no code at all?
Yeah. My point would be, at that point, you've got a moratorium without the code being enforced while we're able to catch our breath and report back to you.
That seems to make more sense to me.
And having said that, we, you know, if that's not your preference, we'll certainly carry that out, and this will become a high priority, and we'll try to turn it in as quick as we can.
Mr. Gillum?
Yeah. Commissioners, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you. I did want to have a show of hands, because I think there's a lot more support for the moratorium, which is to put a hold on the 2012 IECC, so we have time to work with staff, work through any local amendments, and double-check the code. Could all those that are in favor of putting a moratorium on the 2012 IECC, please raise your hand? Okay, thank you. There was an email that went out to builders, contractors, architects, engineers. We probably had a neighborhood of 30-some on that who are all real supportive. Unfortunately, they evidently couldn't be here tonight, so I wanted to make sure you knew that there was a lot of support. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Gillum, while you're up there, it didn't look like anybody else was coming up. Let me ask you just a few follow-up questions on this, and that is, and one of the comments is to something that Mr. Morris had made, on the fact that, you know, they review these, but they don't really apply them to anything. Isn't that the purpose why we have, isn't that why we had licensed professionals that serve on those boards, to provide that insight as to what the professional practice concerns are on that? I mean, that's why we do that, and I think that's why we had all those committees, is to really gather all that input. So why, I mean, and nobody really addressed it, why is it that we went through a two-year process, knowing that we were going to implement this thing and that it was going to be in effect, and nobody had any red flags?
Well, I think if you were in some of those committees, there were red flags, but I can also tell you, you know, we have been extremely busy. We've had the school bond issue, so for us to take time away from our practice, from, you know, supporting our clients and providing them the necessary services, we can't always go to committee after committee after committee meeting. I do know, I attended several building advisory meetings, and I cautioned them on commissioning, I cautioned them on some of the envelope and insulation values that were extreme. Why that wasn't taken to heart, I don't know.
Let me ask you, because, and I apologize if it wasn't your comment or whatever, but I wrote down everybody's comments on here. When we talk about being competitive with other communities and so on, we look at who our competition is, I would submit that maybe our competition are the Manhattans and the Hutchisons and the, maybe not so much, the Kansas City area.
Absolutely, that was my point, exactly.
But the Newtons and all of those. Let me ask you this, because we have a lot of, I mean, from a design standpoint, we'll look at RFQs from Kansas City, Omaha, Wichita, all over the place. Aren't all of these design professionals in these communities already up to speed on 2012 International Energy Conservation Code? I mean, just from a design-engineer perspective, aren't, I mean, because I know, like I said, when we get a RFQ, when we put out an RFQ, we'll get proposals from Wichita, Kansas City, Topeka, Omaha, all over the place.
John, look at your chart. Wichita, IECC, none. They have not adopted it. Hutchinson, IECC, none. They have not adopted it. Hayes, not adopted. Topeka, they've adopted the 2009 with amendments. Manhattan, 2009 with amendments. So what I'm telling you, Salina, 2012, adopted no amendments. We are the most restrictive, and we're not being competitive.
Well, here's what I'm trying to address. I'm trying to address the concern that you brought forward, that somehow this is all new to everybody and that nobody had any idea. Have you not been working on projects in maybe Lenexa, Johnson County, Kansas City, some of the areas that have that 2012 code?
With amendments, and it's minimal. There's not that many out there.
Okay, but I mean...
Yeah, we're working in Texas, Colorado, Iowa, Missouri, and very seldom do we hit the 2012 without amendments, and as Donnie says, it takes months to go through those codes and prepare it for a project. So you can't just afford to do that on, you know, when Salina says, "Hey, we're going to have a committee meeting." It is project-based. If you go through the 2012, it depends on the type of building, it depends on the occupancy, it depends on the type of construction. So there are so many variables on what that code is applying to that building. You can't touch them all until, like Donnie says, you have a real project and you're forced to really study, "How does that affect my project?" I mean, it is so time-consuming. So to go to a committee, yeah, you can talk about it in theory, but nobody has the time to really model that and spend hours and hours to go see, you know, what the implications or the cost implications would also be.
Well, and my concern is only this, is that any time you start talking moratoriums, it's like you're into serious business. And so, you know what I mean?
Well, but John, we're trying to be competitive with our neighbors who has not adopted them. So I don't know why it would hurt to say, "Let's back up a little bit, take a breather." We are now realizing that we put ourselves in a predicament that we're going to be costing owners and builders and developers, and they will start looking at, "Boy, Salina's going to cost me 10%, 15% more. I'm going to go on down the road. I can develop it that much cheaper."
Let me kind of bring it up, because I think that we're just, might be talking a little bit past one another here, because what I'm really asking is that, within this entire process, I know that we, once all this got done and we started talking about implementation, we did have a study session. That was, it was standing-room only. I mean, it was very well-attended by contractors, builders, designers, everything. At that time, I know, because I brought it up, I said, "Are we implementing this Energy Code in an incremental fashion, because I don't want to go from 0 to 120 miles an hour overnight?" And that kind of went on deaf ears in that meeting with contractors in there and everything else, and that's why I'm a little concerned now, when I'm, as a governing body member, we're being asked, "Hey, enforce this moratorium," which doesn't mean, if you, do you have plans that are going to come in in the next 20 days?
Yeah.
Do they meet the 2009 code?
Well, we're engineering it to do so, but it's costing our client, and we're having to look at what to take out of the thing to get it in their budget.
Well, I'm just saying, because now, in the next 20 days, it's like nothing. So it's a matter of...
No, that's, John, that's not right. I mean, we, as design professionals, can design to the extreme that we want. We can design to the extreme of the Energy Code or to the energy conservation that our client or owner wants. And most owners are very reasonable. They understand, "If I spend $100 today, and I'm going to get that back in five years, no-brainer. That's a great payback. It's well worth putting that in my building, because I'm going to see a payback." But as we're doing some modeling now, and they're never going to see a return, that's not reasonable. And there's things in the code, you know, we used to always talk about, you know, buying a hammer through the federal government, and it costs us $1,000, when I can go to the hardware store and get one for 10. And that's what's in that code. There are things in the code that I've got to spec out, a $500 light fixture, to get credit in the 2000 IECC code to meet the lighting controls, when I could get the same light with the same bulb and the same energy efficiency for $10.
Right.
And there are just things in there that, until you really start modeling it and engineering it, it's hard to discover and say, "Oh, my gosh. If I run the comp check on this, it will not allow me to take credit for this LED bulb, which is the most efficient bulb out there, because, you know, it's got a different lamp series." So there are just ridiculous things in there that we truly need to amend, so that we're getting credit for what we're designing and not just, you know, getting caught up in bureaucracy.
Well, and I agree with you that there, regardless of whatever, if it's the 2012, amendments probably are warranted. If it's the 2009, maybe still, maybe still they're warranted.
Absolutely.
But those are some of the things that we had an opportunity through this entire process to get at, and we let it get to an emergency where it's now, hey, now we have nothing.
Yep.
Is 120 days enough? I mean, I'm apt to go with staff's request, because I know we're short-staffed. Is 120 days enough?
I think that's tight. I think for everybody to get up to speed with that, it's going to take some time.
I mean, because now the door's open, you're going to have 30, whatever, however many emails you said you have. Now we're going to have 30 opinions, and we're basically starting to ball over, and we don't have a building official, other than our temporary. Hopefully, you're able to take care of that, but, you know, there's a lot of other things going on. And, you know, we've already staffed through these codes, and that's just a, just a thing for me, is we need to get it right, so I appreciate you guys coming in and saying it's not right. But we really got to do better on, especially now that we've given the opportunity. Before, when it was just like, hey, we're going to make these decisions from on high, and we don't care what the folks have to say that have to deal with them. I think once we give the opportunity and staff is there to say, "Hey, give us your input. We really want the input."
Absolutely.
So, and I think that we can be competitive and also be cutting-edge. Everybody else is doing that, too.
You bet.
So...
And, you know, again, I would encourage, again, that we want to vote for the owner and the developer that will own and run that facility, that they should have some say in to those energy efficiencies, as opposed to just a blanket more, you know, a blanket requirement that you will meet this or you won't build it. And that's sort of where we're at right now. And I also know, I've met with Sean, I've met with Gary Hobbie, some of their concerns are, "How are they going to police this?" They have a whole process to try and develop. How are they going to, you know, be able to review and police that all these Energy Codes have met? So they are in a huge learning curve right now as well. So, thank you for listening to us.
Seems to me a moratorium is probably not going to be long enough. It would seem to me like it would be better for the Commission, at least the Commission consider postponing the consideration of the ordinance.
Well, I just have a few concerns. One, if you suspend any codes now, and you're designing projects now under the 2012, and you come up with a different code set, do you then have to have a delayed time for implementation of that? I mean, you end up kicking this down about a whole 'nother year, because you're going to have some things designed under what people think are the codes now, and then you'll have some...
Right. I'd be curious to know, do we have any number on what that, any idea what that number might be of building permits that have been pulled that already comply with 2012?
I know that, well, staff has had that conversation. We have not quantified it, but it is minimal. We weren't aware of many projects. What we, what's hard for us to gauge is what's in the pipeline, that's underdesigned currently that we haven't received yet. And I apologize if I'm repeating myself, but with that 120, assuming that you do 120-day moratorium, we would take a similar communication approach that we did with the April 1 delayed effective date, try to reach out to everyone and let them know that permits submitted up to that 120th day would not be subject to the Energy Codes. And we'd also have to communicate that, at the moment, we don't know what the applicable codes might be when we finalize it, but put everyone on notice that, if you're concerned, it's going to be in your own best interest to submit your plans before the moratorium lapses and a new code is in effect.
Commissioners, I want to be sure and clarify a couple of comments. Mayor Crawford, you mentioned, like, postponing. The current 2012 Energy Code is effective and is being applied today, so the ordinance in front of you would actually, the moratorium would suspend using it. In other words, we wouldn't use it in the time that we're trying to figure out the thing, the issue with the Building Advisory Board. So probably the question is, is if you agree with the moratorium, is just simply how many days? 120 days? You know, 160 days, whatever it might be. And then Commissioner Davis, you had a question about the delayed application of the code. Normally, when we approve a code, as we mentioned before, usually it's a newer version of one of these particular codes, and we traditionally do provide 90 days from the effective date to the time that's going to be implemented. It's a choice you would have at the time. You don't have to make that choice today. In this particular case, you would be going from a code, presumably, that's more restrictive than what you're going to later, so that might, you might have some flexibility, might decide you don't need to do that. But that's not a choice you have to make today. That would be a choice when we bring back a recommendation you could make at that time.
And then, I failed to mention that, if we have any permits that have been issued under the 2012 Energy Conservation Code, and you did enact a moratorium, our intention would be to make them aware that the 2012 IECC is no longer in effect, and they could elect to not construct to that standard.
How many building permits do you think this will, over, if it were 120 days, would affect?
Once again, it really depends on what's in the pipeline. In terms of the DRT meetings, we've had half a dozen, but that doesn't count residential permits, just the commercial that I'm aware of.
Is there a way to differentiate, is there an International Energy Conservation Code residential and one commercial?
Well, that actually takes me to another point I wanted to clarify. Commissioner Hodges asked if it was just the Energy Conservation Code, and that is a document in and of itself. There are some cross-references that you may have seen in the moratorium ordinance that are picking up the cross-reference of Energy Conservation Codes, and then there's what we are calling some savings language, that if we should find, the building officials should find other provisions that we did not itemize in detail, we would not enforce those either. So it might be possible to make a distinction between residential and commercial, but once again, I think, we've heard more about commercial, but I think the same concern is out there as it relates to residential.
All right. I want to switch gears a little bit for this question, but it's in regard to getting to the workable part where everybody wants to be. So I'm understanding that we want to go from the 2012 to the 2009 Energy IECC, correct? I mean, it's not like, let's go from 12 to nothing again.
Yeah, I think you have options. I think that the 12 of being amended, I can't say to what degree 12 would have to be amended. If it's amended too much, you might say it's easier just to go to 9, and then consider whether 9 should be amended or not. So I think presumably, that might be where they end up, but I don't know that that's the only choice. But I do think there's a good likelihood that it'll be 2000, the recommendation will be 2009 with or without certain amendments.
Okay.
Right. And that would be my concern, is until we get a good look at it, it's hard to say what amendments might, what concerns may still remain with 2009 that might need to be addressed with amendments.
Right. And, I mean, do we have any specifics on that? I mean, do we know which ones are there? Because, let me ask you just in this form. We passed by ordinance adopting this thing. Can we adopt here, amending that, to just say, "Put the 2009, substitute the 2009 IECC here? Don't send it back to Building Advisory Board unless they want to make amendments to it at that point." But if there aren't any amendments that need to be made to the 2009, then we're probably good if we can take action today on it.
Yeah. Commissioners, logistically, we don't have an ordinance that would allow you to adopt the 2009, so if you asked us to, if you wanted to do that without amendments, we'd probably need a next meeting, I think, what, we have two weeks. I'm presuming, I'm going to look at Greg, since he gets to help draft that up, but I would presume we'd need to draft an ordinance that's different than today's ordinance, because today's ordinance is a moratorium ordinance. We don't have an adoption of a different code ordinance.
Well, 14 days is still better than 120.
We could. Now, again, we haven't taken input on, even if the 2009 should have an amendment or two, so we really don't know if that's the case or not. And that's a question, I mean, that may be a question for folks in the audience, whether they see the need to look at amendments for 2009. I don't know if there is a need.
Well, I mean, if there are specific concerns of having gone through and tasked this, I mean, do you have, just for Mr. Gillum or any of the other speakers, were there particular sections in there that 2009 code would need to be amended, or would the 2009 code be enough right now? And of course, with practice, you know, over time, there may be those sections of 9 that may need to be changed, but what I was hearing is that 9 was fine, 12 is where the issues were. Would it be okay to do 9?
Could I ask a second part of your question? When you say amended, do you mean updated or dumbed it down?
Well, I think what it's doing is you're saying, "Adopt the 2009," so it's a less restrictive.
Yes, made less restrictive.
And so I think without, I don't really see that going to the Building Advisory Board, if that's sufficient, really does anything, because we're not adding any layer of complexity onto this. We're basically making it sort of that incremental thing that I wanted to...
Yeah. If we know exactly where we want to be, that ordinance could be created. So that is a question for the audience. Commissioner, typically amended means, I don't know, I'd say dummed it down, but it does mean made less restrictive most of the time.
You know, and I understand the reason for wanting to say, have the option of saving money when you want, but I hope I'm not hearing that, you know... of saving money when you want, but I hope I'm, I'm not hearing that, you know, Salina should not necessarily strive to be at a higher level than what's absolutely the minimum required by law. Now, if it's an unreasonable requirement, it's nice if you have the option. And I think the, the football press box is a good, a good example. But, you know, it's two years of work went into getting us where we are now. And I just, you know, don't know to what degree you can have modeled some of this, you know, when Medicare and Medicaid changes are proposed, you know, first thing hospitals and offices do, they start running numbers a year, two in advance. And we don't have the option of going back to Congress and saying, you know, we don't like this, we're losing more money than what you thought, could you change it? Every once in a while, we get a little change our way, but we've known all along what the changes were, and we have to adapt. And I don't know if, you know, if there's something that really is desired out of this. I would, I would keep a time limit extremely tight, otherwise I'd, you know, this is gonna, will be in 2018 going through this again. And I would, I mean, there's, I think there's enough concern here now, enough attention that even if it means, you know, talking to colleagues in these places where, where it has been done with, with amendments.
Commissioners, I would, I would recommend to at least allowing the Building Advisory Board one shot regardless of what it would be. And the reason is, is because that's how you typically use them. And so it would make sense to at least have them meet once, minimally, to address that question.
That, that requires voting a moratorium, though.
Doesn't require it. That's, that's the preferred option, I think, by the folks here. It doesn't require it.
When's the next time the Building Advisory Board meets?
July 11th.
So it's right around the corner.
What, one procedure, the way this ordinance is written does not say what takes the place of the 2012
Nothing.
Code with the moratorium.
That code is lifted, not applied. So any, anything that deals with energy efficiency, as Mike mentioned, if it's related to that code, would also be lifted. So it would have to be something totally unrelated to that code that would have already been inherently in the building code.
So does it automatically revert back to the last set of codes, or does this say there's no code at all now during the moratorium?
Go ahead.
There are energy-related provisions that have been in and remain in the building code and the mechanical code. Those would remain in effect. But the, the added approach that's implemented by the Energy Conservation Code, which, this is the first time we've adopted that, that would be the subject of the moratorium, would not be in effect until we come back and resolve how we want to proceed.
If I may, just one further point on that. Nothing goes away by virtue of this ordinance. Every code that's in effect now remains in effect. The moratorium relates strictly to the enforcement and administration by city staff. That's the, that is the effect of the moratorium. That's the timeout.
It's not, it's not a repeal.
Right. In fact, that was the first question I wrote down to never to answer. Is this just a timeout, basically?
Let me, let me ask this as a follow-up to that July 11th. That's a Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have that action on the 18th or the 17th? Can we have action on their advisory recommendation on that? Because, and that would give them time for, to be able to, to have whatever, I mean, because it sounds like if, if it's, if 12's the problem and 9 is mostly okay, there's probably only a couple of tweaks that need to take place. And I'd rather do that than a moratorium. And that's only three weeks, not 120-day moratorium.
Right. Staff can certainly prepare a similar report and provide some additional detail to the Building Advisory Board that wouldn't need to prepare between now and then.
Okay.
The diffi, and I think with the, there are three communities that adopted the 2009 code with amendments. That's Kansas City, Manhattan, and Topeka. I think we could share those amendments with the Building Advisory Board. The first difficulty is gonna be, we need a quorum, which we didn't have at the last meeting. The second difficulty is going to be the, just their deliberations and the discussion with the development community. And so as much as possible, staff could try to have some of those conversations with the development community. But with the remainder of this week and the 4th of July holiday, I'm a little concerned that we'll be able to gather that information and provide it to the Building Advisory Board. We can, that's why I say that the most likely thing we could do is provide the Building Advisory Board with the Kansas City, Manhattan, and Topeka amendments.
And I think that that's a goo, I think that's a good approach.
Yeah, that is.
And I would prefer to do that than, than start having 100-day, 120-day moratoriums. Is that something that?
Yeah. Well, I was gonna answer your original question. You know, every, every code needs some kind of local amendment, because we're trying to get rid of that $1,000 hammer. We're trying to get rid of the, the non-common sense issues like Charles had mentioned on the stadium, some of our manufacturing buildings, that they really don't leave us a window to accommodate a common sense approach. The other thing I'm very concerned about when I met with the Building Advisory Committee, the reason Mike and Jason took charge, and I really appreciate that, is they didn't have a quorum. And I heard in that meeting, well, we'll table it, Jeff, and can you come back? And then I had a couple of the, the people there say, well, I drop off, and I drop off. And they're thinking, oh, do we have anybody to fill that position? So my concern is, how long will the Building Advisory Committee go to where we will not have a quorum and we will not be able to do anything?
You know, that, that board is a board of qualified professionals in the design, engineering, and construction industries. It's not laypeople. If you can't rally the building and development community to come to their own meetings, then I don't know what to tell you. But I
Well, there's contractors on there. I don't know who, what all the different disciplines are. But again, John, as
I'll, I'll help you call them and get them there.
We're extremely busy. We have, there's a lot of work in Salina and neighboring communities, and it's, it's hard to say no to a paying customer. I have to go to a board. No, I'm gonna sit and get his job done. My priority is with him. So unfortunately, you know, you set some priorities.
If this was mid-winter, it'd be a little easier.
But anyway, my concern is, yeah, that, I wouldn't rely everything on the Building Advisory Committee, because right now it looks like they're gonna be short.
Is the 2000, I mean, and you're looking at it, for getting done what, I mean, for the emergency that we're in right now, does the 2009 code straight take care of those issues?
I think you'd have to take with amendments. But, but not having studied that specifically, I can't tell you what those amendments are. I'm not prepared to talk to you about that.
Commissioners, on the timing, I just inquired with Greg. The Building Advisory Board by law doesn't have to take that and give you advice. It's just, it's the system you set up for them to do. My thought is, is that you give them a shot. This assumes we're going with a quick approach here. If that's the case, give them a shot. If they're there, they do their thing. We see what comes out of that. If they don't have a quorum, we bring it back to you on your date. So that way, we don't delay the item.
Yeah.
That presumes we're going with that more aggressive timeframe.
Right.
If you don't want to do that, then it doesn't matter.
And is it possible to have, since it would be, you would be putting that together for the Building Advisory Board, we would have what those amendments may be and, and to be able to staff through some of those with, with the building official and otherwise?
I certainly think we can, can have a detailed summary of all the local amendments adopted by those three communities that I mentioned.
Okay.
Beyond, beyond that, any deliberation that involves the development community and the Building Advisory Board and you as the city commission in bringing that to a culmination, I'm not, we'll just have to see how that conversation goes, whether that can be, be done in, in one setting. And as you know from prior ordinances, we can do our best to try to draft it so it, everything's in and you can delete out what you don't want in. But that, that may be a little bit of an exceptional exercise here before you when it comes back.
Is that amendment process, though, something that can happen at any time? I mean, that doesn't have to happen when you adopt
That's correct.
The code, I mean, things come up, and hey, you know, this is a little more problematic than we maybe thought originally. Can we work towards amending that? Yeah, okay.
In the past, we've done local amendments to, to relieve codes that are, were aggressive to clarify codes that
Right.
Were unclear and
And I think that's what Mr. Hall was talking about with the structural part, is that when that came up, in a timely manner, it was, it was dispensed of with, I'm assuming without a moratorium, but maybe there was.
Yeah. But our thought is, moratorium or not, if you have a date you want to have it brought back, we can run that route and then see what happens out of that. We don't know for sure what'll happen out of that. And then, for example, if out of that, everyone thinks we need to have, take more time, we bring it, it'll be put in front of you. Well, we can ask for more time if we need it. You can decide if you want to authorize it or not, but you have it in your lap at that point. You can decide to postpone and, and allow it to go further or not. It's up to you. But we could certainly try to hit the target date. But as Mike mentioned, I think there are two bases for the information of amendments. One is what the other cities have done. It's not that big a deal, I don't think, to combine those and take a look at them. The other would be input from the professionals that deal with it, that now have experienced that, to bring that in and see how that matches up with the other information.
I did have one quick question since. The design professionals have already kind of worked through the 2012 code. Would it maybe make more sense for us to work on amending the 2012 code instead of completely going back to an unfamiliar 2009 that's never been adopted by the city and we haven't studied it? I mean, we're
The one thing that
I don't know. I'm, I'm asking. I mean, it may be something where Mr. Mars and Mr. Gillum and Mr. Rens and Mr. Hawke can say, I've already encountered these six specific problems with 2012 that may or may not exist in 2009.
Well, I mentioned it previously, and I think I'm, this may help. And the one thing that I mentioned previously was the 2000, Energy Conservation Code has a COM check software aspect to it that the other codes don't go to that much detail. So it makes a provision that the applicant and the designer is to submit a COM check report. And so we would really need to look at that in a little bit more detail. If, if you adopt 2009, you're picking up that COM check as-is
You got a COM check requirement.
Versus amend 2012 to the point that now we're taking, we're causing a standalone review by the designer and staff versus being able to use COM check.
Mr. Mars?
To address your question, we're always gonna see various cities with various different codes and different levels and different amendments. One of the things I would, would suggest you be aware of, and Mr. Blanchard, you made the comment that you're short-staffed already. There are a lot of very technical issues that are involved with this energy code that our mechanical, electrical engineers have to do for us. I question whether you have anyone on your staff now, or ever will have, who has the qualifications to review those reports to determine whether or not we've totally complied with the intent of the code. So be real careful what you ask for, because you are not staffed to deal with it right now.
And that's why I stress the COM check, the reliance on the COM check is
That's the reason we took two and a half years to get to this point. So that those people in your profession who could answer those questions should have the opportunity to do so. We can't, you know, legislate how much research and how much planning and programming and, and modeling would be required to see how these work out. And I mean, we expect you to be the experts on determining if this was a good thing or not. And we went through a lot of effort six months ago, and this conversation should have occurred six months ago, not after the fact.
No, I disagree with you, because six months ago, we were not using this code in doing the work that we're doing. We're using this code now because it's adopted. And now we're knowing, now we know what's in this code.
So would not have crossed your mind to, let me see how this might turn out, using the plan that I know is probably gonna be adopted in three months? I mean, just for fun?
Dr. Davis, in the aspect of, do I have time in my job to have fun looking at the next version of code? The answer is no, I do not.
What about in the, what about in the, in the capacity of being a member of the Building Advisory Board?
We were looking at the, at the differences between one code to the next as they, as the generation of codes occur. You have to understand these codes
Were you looking at 9 versus 12, or were you looking at nothing versus 12?
When I was on the Building Advisory Board, we were dealing with the 2006 codes. And we chose not to have an energy code.
When did you go, when did you go off? Weren't you involved in this whole code adoption process?
No, I was not.
When did you go off the board?
I don't, I can't tell you when I went off the board, but I was not involved in the 2012 portion of it. I attended a number of the meetings. But when we're looking at codes, you look at what the changes are. If you look in the, in the left-hand margin, there's a black bar that tells you there's been changes in these sections. So you gotta go look at the previous code to see what the changes are. It may be just one or two words, but they mark the entire section. So that's what we do in the Building Advisory Board, is to determine what that change was and, and is it a valid change. We were still dealing with a significant amount of amendments. We still have a significant, significant amount of amendments just to make the two different sets of codes that we use, from mechanical, electrical, to the international building code, just to make them compatible. But the whole idea that the design community is not doing their job because we haven't looked at the codes as they were adopted, that's not how the process works. The codes that are adopted, once they're adopted, then you use them and determine how they apply to the building that, that you're designing, and the information that you're required to submit to the, to the building officials. That
Let me ask you, how, how do you then weigh in when you give an opinion to a board that's considering changing codes? Is it just on the quality of the change? I would assume cost and payback over time is at least one of the factors that would influence what you would tell the members on that board considering adoption, adopting the new codes?
Yeah, and new systems, new materials, you know, new, you know, there's a lot of, there's things changing in the building industry constantly, and the codes are trying to keep up with them. You have to understand that these codes are adopted by code councils, and it's, it's basically the people that show up to the code councils are the people that are trying to influence the outcome of the code. Insurance companies, the, the whole fire code issue, the whole issue with regard to sprinkler systems. Why do, why do you think the code gives municipalities a break on the number of, or the, the amount of fire flow if you sprinkler a building? You get to cut it in half. You get to a point with these codes as they're adopted, and we're not gonna have, for instance, in Western Kansas, we have a number, number of cases where they can't meet the fire flow requirements because their building needs to be an assembly building. And so what do you do? How, you know, you're gonna get to the point where there's nothing that can be built because of, of the standards that are there, if there, if there's not amendments that are allowed. So I mean, those are things that you can't predict when you're looking at making a change or adjustment. The whole issue with regard to changing the codes from, to the International Plumbing and Mechanical Code. You say anything about that in the city of Salina, and this room has got people standing out in the hallways, because they have used the uniform codes forever, and they don't want to change. And no five people have required them to change yet. And I sat in your position, and I tried, and, and that was not, it wasn't a hill to climb. You know, there was no, you know, couldn't, couldn't get three votes on that one. So.
It sounds like building design folks and physicians should both go take classes in lobbying. It sounds like you've got the same problems we have.
Yeah. But our forum is to come before you, to ask you to help or to recognize the situation that we're in.
Mm-hmm.
And it comes down to you as a body to, to recognize that and hear, hear from us, because that's what you're here for. It's our job to bring these issues to, to you if they're a concern, to us. And I applaud Jeff Gullum and all the other And I applaud Jeff Gillum and all the other design professionals and the people in the construction industry who have a concern. And this is only one of the items we have concerns with. We're working on three or four others that need some significant help with, too. Staff's aware of that, and we're trying to work with them on helping you with that. So that's how we help, that's how we give back to the community. And this is all part of helping and giving back to the community, what we're doing here today.
Very appreciative of that, and I'm sympathetic for the concern. It would be nice if we could have saved a lot of staff time and money, and maybe having had some inkling that there was some discontent early on. Even with the concerns that you mentioned, I understand the difficulty in running a proposed project through the code you haven't worked with before.
Well, I can tell you, none of us in this room get up in the morning with the idea that we're not going to do the best we can do that day. We get up and do the best we can. And I can tell you, those people that volunteer to be on the building advisory board, attend all those meetings, they did that on their own time. They did the best they could do at the time they were doing it. And now we're seeing that...we are seeing that there are changes that need to be made, and we would like to have you address those changes. And if you need help addressing them and help understanding what it takes to staff up to be able to handle the information, or even tell us what information you want to see, because that isn't even really clearly defined. So the code is just the beginning. It does give the code official a lot of flexibility to waive irregularities, to not require documents. The...and there are a number of jurisdictions I work in that that building official does have that power and authority. Here, that isn't the case. So you've got to get staffed up to the point where, I hope someday that would be the case, we would have building officials like Mr. Brown, who did a very good job, stay around and continue to work. And now we're in the midst...the interim, I think, has a lot of work to do, but I think he's capable of learning. But there's a learning curve. You have to live with the learning curve. So Sean's a very capable person, but he's got a lot to learn to get to the point where he can deal with that.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mars. I'm willing to put some action on this.
I'll put together a motion.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm Kevin Kuhl. I'm a contractor here in town. I don't actually live in Salina, I live in the county, but my base...my business is mainly in this town. I think something that everybody misses here is the code book's kind of a guideline. It's not a law. It's a guideline that we have to follow. So there are certain instances where I've worked on projects where we couldn't meet the letter of the law or the letter of the code. It had to be interpreted so that we could use it, because in certain cases, it can't be applied. So we try to come as close as possible. And all we're asking for is a little help. I attended some of these meetings for review of the code. I'm not a member of that committee, but I attended them. And they did a lot of work and a lot of diligence trying to eliminate some of the overlap and some of the amendments that the community's made as far as the code book related, so they could make it easier for staff to determine what needed to be done. And we just...we're asking you to help us, give us a little more time so that we can get things right. All right. Thank you.
And next time we have interest forms, sir, maybe you would fill it out and help us out.
I have it.
Oh, okay. Good, good. Great.
Well, Madam Mayor, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to make a motion that we send this item to the building advisory board with the intent for them to adopt with or without amendments the 2009 IECC. And if for whatever reason they...and with the intent of bringing it back for final action with a corresponding ordinance on July 17, 2017.
Second?
Question about the motion. That does not address the moratorium?
What it does is I'm saying, "Let's do this without a moratorium. Let's get that done." Because quite frankly, what I heard is that 2009 works mostly good, and I want to be quick and responsive and get it done as quick as possible and move forward. The other thing is, is what we heard is that, "Well, geez, there's a chance that the building advisory board may not meet because of a lack of a quorum." Well, you know what? All that does is if they only meet once a month, that kicks that 120-day moratorium to whatever the extra day is. I don't want to kick the can down the road on this thing. I think the building and design and engineering community deserves to have an incremental step in that energy code. And that's what I thought that we were getting all along, is that not just a quick jump to whatever the most restrictive code was, but that...and I think it was sold to the development and builders as well as, "Listen, we're going to take an increment." You know, "We're going to take an incremental approach to this thing." So I want to get that done. I don't want to wait 120 days for somebody to maybe get together, not get together on that thing. That doesn't mean that once we adopt the 2009, if there are problems with that 2009, we need to know immediately and get those to the building advisory board, and let's do the typical amendment process.
So your motion leaves 2012 in place right now?
It leaves it for the next three weeks until we...until we're able to get the 2009 enacted, with or without the building advisory board.
And if that came to pass, would we then have to pass an ordinance to actually repeal the 2012? I mean, some of you just don't easily replace things.
If it progressed to the adoption of the 2009, with or without amendments, whatever happens in the timeframe that has been proposed in the motion, the ordinance, taking that action, would simultaneously repeal the ordinance that enacted the 2012.
Thank you.
And I would just prefer, as I said, to make this a three-week process rather than a four-month process, have it drag out, have more staff time, more staff time. Let's just get it done, and let's get the folks moving forward with what they said they need, and that is the 2009, and with and/or without amendments.
And I agree with that. I think that makes sense. And I think I heard a second?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion?
As well as I do, anyway.
Fast-tracking this, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. That motion's carried.
So nothing then today needs to be done with this item on the agenda?
I'm about ready to send Mike out of the room to get started.
Have we asked Mike to spin straw into gold just now?
I basically asked him that question. Our responses is, "We have direction, we'll do the best we can."
Thank you, Mr. Gillum, and all of you who came up and gave us some input. We appreciate that very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Mars, Mr. Gillum. Okay, we're going on to 7.3.
Item 7.3, discussion and direction to staff regarding the operating model to offer concessions at the Salina Field House.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, in early May...
I'm trying ketchup.
Yeah. Jonathan Dong, who is a local food service program manager for Bowhead Operations and Maintenance Solutions, forwarded his interest to staff and then later to you of the possibility of privatizing the food operation at the new field house, which is getting pretty close to being finished. Staff asked you if you're interested in discussing that further. You said yes, so that's what we're going to do. One of the things I thought would be helpful to do is kind of go back over the intent. It may or may not be helpful for you, but as we talk about the field house, as you know, the number-one thing is competitive tournament use. It's when you're going to have most of your people in there, typically on a weekend, I would expect. Number two, team practice use. I wouldn't see really need for concessions of that type for that. Third, Parks and Recreation Department programming use. Probably wouldn't see...might be some exceptions as far as having live concessions. And some open public access with controlled hours as part of the hybrid operational model. And then also, the final use would be any of those requirements of the new market tax credits, which are more of a community development complementary-type thing. So I think it's important to continue to say that. Sometimes I hear people say the priorities have changed, and other than the new market tax credits, they haven't, and the tournament's always number one. That's what it was built for. The original concept for providing food service was to...and you can see it in how the kitchen was designed, was to be more of a traditional concession stand at a gymnasium-type facility. And we're talking about, it's not...does not have a grill or other cooking equipment. It does have a hot dog roller, freezer, refrigerator, and food warmer. So the intents are things like hot dogs, packaged food, cold items, and drinks, very simple concession-type items. The purpose behind that was simply to be able to meet a need at the time you need to meet a need, but quite honestly, keep it pretty simple because we realized that this is a cornerstone of the downtown redevelopment, and would like people to leave the building when they have a chance to do that, and go eat at the restaurants downtown, additional restaurants we hope to have, and, you know, hopefully, maybe a year, year and a half. So that was the whole intent behind that. It's not set in stone or anything. And we kind of went back and talked with someone associated with Salina 2020 to make sure our recollection was in line with that, and it was. And I'm not saying it's a high priority item, we just wanted to make sure we weren't off-base. So talk a little bit about advantages and disadvantages of in-house versus private concessionaire models, and that could go a lot further than what I have. And I'm not going to cover every item, but we did think it was important to lay that out for you from our perspective. Start with an in-house. Doing an in-house. Advantages are, we can continue to push what I call the restaurant-quality food out to the private restaurants. That was the intent. Full concession operational control, so if you need to be flexible anytime, you have a little bit more flexibility to do that. We retain 100% of the profit margin. Flexibility to change food offerings at any time, if we want to do that. Flexibility for vendor-provided food offerings, subletting of outside concessionaires for special events. There are times if the tournament's big enough, they know they're big, and they'll try to extract out of you certain things. And sometimes it's a portion of the concessions. And so you retain more flexibility to deal with that, or at least a simpler approach to deal with that. And compliance with related vendor agreements. Any vendor agreements we have, the vendors like to lock you up with their proprietary products. An example might be a Coca-Cola or Pepsi product, something like that. You see that sometimes if you have one of those, it's a little bit easier to ensure that you're going to meet that. Disadvantages, we incur all staffing and overhead costs, and logistically, that's kind of a pain. We incur all concession purchasing costs, too. We have to take care and think about how we purchase. We don't...we may not be able to purchase in bulk as much as someone else might be able to, so it could affect the food costs. We incur responsibility for food ordering, food prep, and cleanup, so we have responsibility for the whole thing. For product inventory control, loss of inventory. Responsible to manage operational efficiency and concession profit margins. Doesn't do you any good to retain the full margin if you don't have much of a margin. So, you know, you have to operate smart and have a good margin. And overall logistics. So those are some disadvantages to in-house. As we look at the private concessionaire operations, some of these are sort of repeated in a backward way, but there's a couple ways to do that. One is you can just simply rent the space, and they keep the...they keep all the margins. Another is you can go with a gross sales approach, percentage of gross sales. We did check with legal counsel to make sure, since the building is bonded, that we don't have any bonding restrictions to those two models, and we don't, so we feel pretty comfortable there. So from a private perspective, advantages, the city's rules limited to scheduling and quality oversight, really. Concessionaire is responsible for staffing overhead and all the logistics. We don't have to fool with it. Depending upon kitchen requirements, food quality and selection could be enhanced. They could provide a better product than we would initially provide, as long as we don't have to go back and add electricity, you know, add power, add different equipment. Depending upon food selection, quality and pricing, total food sales potential could increase, actually, with better food offerings, there's no question. Food prep and cleanup will all be the concessionaire's responsibility. So those are some pretty good reasons to go private. Disadvantages, it may inhibit restaurant-quality food demand. Might, might not, it's a presumption. That's why our model was set up that way, that go to the downtown...this is about the food demand in the downtown. Profit margins are split, possibly reducing the city's overall revenue stream. When you add more parties and they take their portion, and potentially, it could reduce revenues as a whole to the city. Operational control is limited, must be managed contractually. So again, we don't have the full flexibility I talked about before. Flexibility to change food offerings is going to be limited, some I would expect. With unknown food sales returns, ensuring full concession services for all event sizes could become a challenge. It's easy to get enamored by the large event, like the tournament we're going to have here at the end of July, but what about the smaller events with, you know, 20 teams, something like that? From our perspective, we want to be sure that if you're excited about the big one, we want you to be excited with the same offerings for the small one. And yet, there still have to be a buffer that we say, "If it's so small, or this type of event, we recognize it doesn't make sense at all, and we have to come up with another option and agree to what that is." Addressing food profit percentage splits, if necessary, because of a large event sponsor, we're talking about the big tournament sponsor, could be a problem if we're contractually...if we don't think about that contractually with the food vendor. And in compliance with other vendor agreements could be more difficult if we don't pay much attention to them. I think we can deal with that. There's always a hybrid, what happens over at Tony's Pizza Events Center. They take control, and other entities can come in and actually serve, and then they get a percentage of the profits. So they do lose a little bit of the profits in that case for that purpose, but they don't have to...they do have to coordinate, but they don't have to actually provide paid folks for the upfront concessionaire role. Under any option that's desired by you guys, there's no question, the city will still retain the ultimate responsibility for scheduling, product quality and service quality. Ultimately, the buck stops with us. So wherever you go, that's still going to be there, no matter what. If you should desire to go to a private concessionaire, some things we think you should think about pretty strongly. One is, is we need to apply a competitive approach for selecting a private concessionaire. That means meeting an anticipated quality level and looking at that split. That's really important. Two, an acceptable margin of the profits needs to be retained by the city under either option. The concessionaire must agree to provide services at all event sizes required by the city. And again, you're going to have certain things that...if we have practices, we're not going to probably make a live concessionaire be there, you're going to use vending machines. So those things can be laid out, but if it's a small tournament, we don't want a cherry-pick situation where it's just large tournaments and we can't get service for a small tournament. So we'd have to deal with that contractually. Concessionaire must be able to abide by existing vendor agreements. If we are under a vending agreement where there's a particular product that has to be served, they would need to abide by that. Concessionaire must agree to terms that allow a major event sponsor to share in the concession profits, or be willing to step aside, allow us to step in, provide service, which could be difficult with short notice, actually, but then allow some flexibility for us to deal with that. Because that might be...I can't say it'll happen often. It may not happen at all, but it can happen. But it might be the difference in getting an event or not, if it's a really large event and there's a lot of pull, everybody wants it, and they're in a little higher demand role. So those are things we think that you would...we should incorporate if we did go to a private model and incorporate contractually. At this point, it's really difficult to measure the fiscal impact, the profit impact of either model. I think one can...either can be successful, so it's difficult to tell. So under the fiscal note, I'm putting no measurable impact as known at this time, independent upon food selection, pricing, service levels, and commission levels, that can vary. It's not really a strategic plan item. So we gave you three options to consider. One would be stay with the original approach to operate concession operations in-house. That option still allows for consideration of a private concessionaire. If we find that there's a certain event that it makes more sense to bring a private concessionaire in, we plan ahead, we can still do that. We still have that option. It's just not a locked-up deal for a year or a particular timeframe. But I think we do need to be open to that when it makes sense. Two, use a competitive approach to selecting a private concessionaire, including agreement considerations as previously listed. And then obviously, we give you a third item, which is about any other option you think you might want to look at. Upon any scenario, we think it's going to make sense, at least in the first year or two, to kind of do a post-annual evaluation of whatever approach we take, bring a report back, so you can kind of get an idea where we're at, what the margins were, how much money's been made in concessions, that type of thing, sales. Staff does believe, Parks and Rec staff and city staff believe that retaining concession in-house is most in line with the downtown redevelopment project intent and does provide the most quality...most quality, the most flexibility for special considerations. So if you're dealing with wanting to be in a flexible position, there's no question in-house is the better approach, if that's...but it depends on what your priority is. in-house is the better approach if that's, but it depends on what your priority is, and that's why it varies. And also if your priority is to push folks more out to the restaurants. Otherwise, it's kind of, it's a wash, and it just depends on the quality concessionary and the quality of the agreement. Certainly, we're, we're willing to happily apply whatever model that we get direction to apply and work towards that. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. We have Chris Cotton, I think he's still there, Travis, Travis Shealy, they're both here, and they're, they're the ones who are going to get stuck doing a lot of this stuff, so they're here and to help me provide color, commentation, and answer questions, so.
Thank you. We have two events for July scheduled. Are there any plans right now to even sell candy bars or sodas or water or anything at those two events?
For the, for the first two big events that we have booked, letting the event operators have concessions was a, was a point of contention to either get the event or not have the event. For the MAYB specifically, they wanted to run the concessions themselves, help offset the cost of running the event. So for that and the homeschool event, the, letting them have concessions was part of the deal to get the events.
You know, that, that's an interesting part, because you know what, in this whole discussion about, hey, let's build a fieldhouse, we never heard anything about, hey, the event promoters and organizers are going to want that, that the concessions was going to be a cash cow.
That is, that is.
You know what I mean? It's like that never came to us before until now. And so for me, it's like, well, why are we just now hearing about this? I mean, did we not plan anything for the concession stands because we knew that was going to be the case, or were we just unaware of it?
I'm not sure, given, given the approach to be in-house anyway, I'm not sure it mattered at that time. If there would have been more contemplation early on about in-house versus private, then I think that topic would probably come up.
Because, yeah, I mean, it's an important point. Do you, with these concessions, whether, I mean, if, if the promoter is running the concession stand, are they collecting sales tax?
Well, yeah, we'll have to, all the laws are followed regardless of who's, who's doing that, that's not really a consideration.
Because I know when I go buy a hot dog at the South High Central football game or whatever, it's a buck and I don't, I'm handing the high school kid a buck and they're not even ringing it in. Is, are those, I mean, are we collecting sales tax like that, or, I mean, because there's no cash register or anything?
We have a point of sale system that will be in the concession stand, so all that will be tracked.
So we, so we will be tracking sales tax.
If state law says you have to collect sales tax, we collect sales tax. Many times in those situations, what they'll do is, is it's easier than to have people do the calculation to keep the number even like that, and then they'll calculate the tax out of that total.
Out of that dollar or whatever.
Yeah, in a minute then. Because it's too much math at the time.
Mr. Cotton, are you, are you planning to be geared up to do these kinds of concessions? Or if what I'm hearing, if the, the people, the prospects to come in there negotiating for the concession sales, are, were you kind of, I mean, how prepared are you to, to be handling this task at this point?
Well, we laid, we laid the concession out specifically for it to be open. In other words, if it's something that we need to handle, then we can handle it. If not, if we go with, say, the, the model that, that Tony's Pizza Events Center does, it's all laid out so it's fluid. Can we do it? Absolutely. If we did it on a consistent, full-time basis, we would really need to study our margins to make sure that we were covering our operating costs for payroll and staff and everything else. However, the way that we have set it up is so that it can be fluid for all things, including, for example, moving our summer camp over there next year. We will need that concession stand, we will need that kitchen area for the kids to have lunch program out of, for the facility. And that's, in that instance, whatever direction we would go, we need to have an agreement with our concessionary if we go that route, that when we have our events, we get to use the kitchen for the kids.
What's your preference, Mr. Cotton? Which way would you prefer to, what's your recommendation?
My preference is either that we maintain it ourselves, or we go with the Tony Pizza Events Center model.
The difference between those two, you would just basically have the organization sponsoring the event, work the concessions?
Correct, yes, sir. We would still control inventory. And, and other things that we're looking at is, you know, several months ago, you all approved a new sponsorship policy, and some of the sponsorships that I'm currently trying to work on are tied to the concession stand. So as Jason mentioned, whoever would come in there would have to abide by whatever policies we worked out, whether that be a certain pizza, or a certain soda, or a certain candy bar for that matter, or anything else that we work on, that would have to be reflected in the agreement.
How does the concession stand over at the Kenwood Cove?
That one is contracted out to the gentleman that runs the Wendy's here in town.
Okay, so we have, so we do that already?
We do, yes, sir.
How, how would this fieldhouse be much different, other than obviously the?
So when we have our leagues, our in-house leagues, generally what happens in that situation is families will eat before they come to the fieldhouse. So I would say unless we turned off the vending machines and made them go to the concession stand, that the vending machines would, would get primarily most of the business. We may sell a hot dog or two, popcorn, candy bar, but it won't be extensive sales. And I know this from just running facilities like this in the past. On tournament weekend, it'll be very busy. But it'll be generally, as Jason mentioned, it'll be people trying to feed the kids in a short order to, to go downtown, hopefully, and eat at some of our restaurants down there. That's one of the genius things about the way the fieldhouse model is set up, is that it encourages downtown revitalization.
Right, that's what we want. I mean, if they want to grab a hot dog at the fieldhouse, that's fine, but then hopefully the whole family will go downtown and eat.
Correct.
Or somewhere. That's my, that's what I've thought all along, that it would.
And as I mentioned, it all depends on what your priority is. Your priority sort of may dictate what your outcome would be. If you have different priorities, you may have, you can have different outcomes as far as which option you like the best.
Yeah. I mean, there's one thing is like, I appreciate your, your position on kind of where you want to be. I kind of look at the thing like with, with Kenwood Cove, I don't want to be in the food service business. You know, it's kind of one, I don't want, you know what, I don't want to be in the food service business. And as far as kind of worrying about detracting from, like, if somebody goes into the fieldhouse, that they're not going to go to some other restaurant, well, we've got a, we've got a bowling alley that's proposed, that has a, has a bar and grill inside of that, so people aren't going to go bowling and, and be discouraged too much from going somewhere else to eat as much, you know what I mean? They'd be more, more apt to eat in that bowling alley than they would go somewhere else versus the, hey, let's grab a quick snack in between games and, because everybody's on a different schedule, and then we'll go eat our meal. The other thing that, and, and I'll let the, if we're going to get to the point where Mr. Dong can, can speak up, is that I'd just be real curious to find from him, and it's why I don't place a whole lot of concern on it really drawing away from the sit-down restaurants, is because they have a sit-down restaurant. And, you know, so it's kind of an interesting, it'd be an interesting perspective to, to understand of where that comes from. But, but I appreciate that there may be a different model for events versus just the open court and people showing up for practices. And I don't know if that can be accommodated by vending machines in some cases, or what that might be.
Everything we're teaching our kids in school about healthy eating probably shouldn't be in the same sentence with the words vending machine, with no offense to vending machine operators, but.
We can, we could probably bin kale.
Getting a lot of exercise coming through.
They do serve a purpose when you just really got to have something right then and there, but most parents are trying to feed kids real quick between games and then.
If, if commissioners, if we can keep the flexibility we want to keep for when we need to use it, that's the key if we go with the private concessionary, I think. That's what Chris mentioned, that's the key.
I mean, I'm assuming that a lot of that flexibility can be negotiated.
We could try. I mean, I, I think that'd be a question for Jonathan when he comes up, but certainly we would want to do that because, again, we want all those events, and if they do, we'll try to negotiate the best, to keep the most that we can for ourself, but the purpose of that fieldhouse, the primary purpose, is to bring in all the tournaments we can bring in from wherever, whether they're playing basketball, or, you know, volleyball, or bobbing for apples, I don't care. So that's the point.
And, and just, I just want to address that question because I don't want to feel like I'm passing over something without asking, so are you suggesting that we hurt our chances for getting tournaments if we don't have the concession part of the money to give back to the promoter?
Well, I think possibly, if they come in and they say, hey, part of our deal is, we don't care who's providing concessions, to them, they're blind to it, I would expect, but they say, if part of our deal is, is you have to give us X percent, 20%, I don't know what, I don't know what the real number is, Chris could tell you that, but whatever that percentage is, we try to negotiate that, but if our answer is zero, that's probably a factor. Does that mean we won't get tournaments when they ask for that? I don't, I can't say that. Does it mean it changes your odds? Well, it could.
Is that, is there a deal like that in place, say, at the Bicentennial or Tony's Pizza Events Center, when they have a concert where they, where, if the promoter for the concert comes in and says, I need this amount per ticket and I need this amount of your concessions and?
At, at the Tony's Pizza Events Center, Spectra has the ability to negotiate concessions with a promoter if they need to. I don't know if they have, but they have the ability to negotiate any part of, because they retain, I mean, you've got the groups, the groups are going to get their split, but in that case, the real management of the food operation is still Spectra, the folks who manage the Tony's Pizza Events Center. So they have the ability, once that nonprofit entity gets their cut, to take the rest of it, and they can deal with the promoter if they want to. So as, as long as we have the flexibility, if necessary, that's, that's what we'd be asking for.
And what I can tell you is that, remember, the tournament business, this is these people's business. So if, if we may get them one time, they may come to us and, and do whatever percentage of concessions that, that we need to do, or if we have a private vendor or whatever, but if somebody else comes along with the facility that rivals ours and says, we'll give you all the concessions, they're going to go to that facility. They, they just are. Because at the end of the day, it's, that's how they make their living.
It'd have been nice to know a lot of, a lot more of this stuff before we built that thing.
We learn as we go.
Yeah.
Well, having.
I appreciate, I appreciate, and I, I understand that, but really.
Yeah, I have, I have concerns about, about staffing it internally, but I also know from running a lot of fencing tournaments that you do make a lot of money from your concessions. I mean, we always, we always made a lot of money off concessions. Yeah, I don't know. And I, I do like the thought, as Dr. Davis said, is of having some good food options, because I know that, again, when I was traveling with children competing, a lot of times we didn't have good food options. It was, it was a hot dog, it was a candy bar between bouts, and I don't know.
The, the good part about having healthy, I think when you say good, you mean healthy food options, is, is in case you may still push folks out to the restaurants and hit that target.
Right, yeah.
A lot of organizations sponsoring tournaments will provide manpower at the concession stands. I mean, that's, again, how the organization makes a few extra, a few extra dollars. Or I'm sure there are groups in town who would love to come in, just like they do at Tony's Pizza Events Center.
And one thing too, I don't want to overdramatize the, the idea of pushing out to the private restaurants. I'm not saying that that will put someone out of business or keep them from coming in, I don't necessarily think that at all. I'm just saying, that was the initial concept. Whether that even plays out, I have no idea. That's just, just to give you the background as to why it was designed the way it was.
We're all going to learn a lot in the next year, probably, about how it's going to work. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Dong.
Jonathan Dong with Bowhead Support Group, and I just feel this is a significant investment by the city of Salina, so we need to have a food service program that matches that investment. Getting a private food service vendor in there is going to, it's going to maximize the fieldhouse's revenue potential. We've got two lines of, or two streams of revenue, the rental of the facility and our food service concessions. So, I mean, we can be flexible with the RFP and be open to negotiations, but I just want you guys to think about, when you're, when you're bringing in these kids, you know, outside sources to man the facilities, I mean, you are sacrificing your quality, your safety, I mean, everything. I mean, are these kids certified to be even serving food? I mean, did that kid wash his hands after he just got done picking his nose? I don't know, you know? So, I mean, I've been to the ballfields, I've been to the, you know, the food, it's ballfield food, but every time I go up there, it's a different kid. He doesn't look professional, he's in his baseball t-shirt and a hat. But I mean, when people come use this fieldhouse, they're going to put Yelp reviews out there, the quality of the food, the professionalism, uniforms, just the facility overall. If we can give them a good, healthy food option, a professional-looking food option. Tony Events Center, I've been there, I go there a lot for tournaments. The staff, I mean, you know, God bless them, they're here for the first time, they're out there kicking out hot dogs and popcorn, but it's not the most professional thing. I just think, you know, privatizing it, being open with, you know, open negotiations, we can make this thing a top-notch facility and something you guys be proud of, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
And, Mr. Gage, you had sent us out an email that kind of had a little more specifics because you focused in the blue sheet a little bit on the, on the facility equipment that we, that we have there, or I should say, lack of. But you addressed that in some, in, in just your sort of introductory proposal through that email. Could you kind of explain kind of what, because I wasn't quite clear of what you were proposing to provide?
I'm proposing, I'm proposing one more healthy options, something you could actually feed your kid, not something you see at Tony Events Center at the ballfields, but, you know, we have the ability to use off-site kitchens. We've got the storage facilities, the capabilities to do it. I'm talking, you know, salads, you know, for the moms and the dads and the kids. I mean, these kids are coming in here, you brought your kid two hours away to come perform in sports. You don't want to feed them, you know, between games, here, eat a candy bar and a soda, we just drove two hours. No, here, have something healthy before this next match or this next game. You know, you don't want to be popping, you know, useless calories into their body.
But you would have some of that stuff?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, you would have the unhealthy options as well.
Yes, I mean, those are staples, you've got to have the hot dogs, but you've got to have the quality stuff, I mean, you've got to have the popcorn, you've got to have the, the pretzel, but then you've got to have some, I mean, more and more people, you know, I'm at, I'm at these things all the time, it's like, you know, it's hot, it's, you know, I was at a ball tournament last weekend, it was in Russell, and it was so hot, it's like, I don't want a soda pop, I don't want any of that. It's like, if you had a fresh piece of watermelon or something like that, or yogurt parfait, that would hit the spot, or something like that, but no, we got some sliced, overdone pizza, we got these oranges, or these grayish-looking hot dogs, and soda pop, and that's what we got. And you can get a candy bar too, but that's, you know, I think given a, I mean, this, this fieldhouse looks really nice, and we put a lot of money into it. I think we can really benefit by having a, a good, quality, professionally-run food service program, uniforms, input of the city, but, I mean, when you think about it, you know, nothing against Parks and Recs, but they're, they're for Parks and Recreation, they're not food service. Bring in these other people, and who's qualified, who's certified, who's Surf Safe certified? You know, and, you know, we do have the state food service officer who comes out and inspects these places. You won't see her out during the evenings or the weekends. So you can walk by any of these places and see health code violations everywhere, because these kids don't know it, the parents don't know it. You know, do you really want to put, you know, the Salina Fieldhouse at risk because, you know, I want to help this person out here? But, you know, you know, you're putting yourself at risk by manning this place with kids that don't know what they're doing, or parents that don't know what they're doing.
What about the thought of the influence on a little higher level of food service at the fieldhouse in the way of salads or fresh fruit, or whatever the case may be, taking away from pushing that, those food sales out to the general downtown restaurant crowd?
In my opinion, I don't think it will. I mean, I don't think it's going to, it's going to hurt the downtown to vendors. Half the time, the, in my, in my experience, the reason people actually eat the concession stands food is like, hey, we're stuck here all day, or, okay, we were supposed to have our next game, you know, two hours from now, we were going to run out and eat a Blue Sky, going to run out and eat a Blue Sky, but, you know, we lost, so now we have to, you know, we're back-to-back. Well, we've got to get the kids something to eat, let's, you know, let's shovel some of this down their throat. You know? It's like, I mean, that's what they use the concessions for, either grab something to eat, or to drink, or just to get yourself through. But sometimes you get stuck in the situation where we've got back-to-back games, we can't leave now, we're stuck in the fieldhouse. It's like, and then, you know, you're going to see, you're going to see Yelp reviews on this Salina Fieldhouse. People are going to rate it, they're going to say, "Well, how was that place?" "Oh, awesome facility." "Food's terrible." Or "It's overpriced," or this, that, and the other. I mean, I think going, you know, hey, let's, let's, let's get after it, let's, let's have a great, quality food service operation. And, you know, on those Yelp reviews, that's, that's one thing you can go after. You can say, "Hey, okay, you know, they're giving us a grade right there." It's like, are we doing it right, are we doing it not? You get a food service program like ours, where we're open to negotiations, it's like, hey, what do you want on this menu? Is this pricing too high? We're real flexible. We, we've got the ability to sole source, since we're an 8A corporation. I mean, we, we could totally skip that whole proposal, RFP process, and it's totally legal. And, you know, and then we could set up one-on-one, it's like, okay, you guys set the parameters and I can tell you what I can do. It's like, if you don't like that, it's like, all right, let's switch this idea, we can go this way.
What would be the opportunity to get together and figure out something like that? I mean...
You mean, sole source it?
Well, just to, kind of, as he says, kind of figure, you know, I, I think even if it's not sole sourced, you'd be interested in the RFP process.
Oh, definitely.
And so, I mean, you would definitely have valuable input into, hey, these are the opportunities and knowing whether or not, you know, with some of the concerns that you had laid out here as far as profit sharing and, you know, making sure that smaller events were covered as well as, you know, just all those general concerns. Is that, is that something that, I mean, that wouldn't be too far out of what we do currently.
No. I, I put those in as if you, if you went with a private concessionaire, that those are considerations with the thought that, I would expect there's, there's one or more out there that would agree to some of those, if not all of those. So, those are just things to contemplate. So I would expect that you would, you know, we could negotiate those items. Or if we're, if we're doing an RFP, I, I wouldn't recommend a sole source, you're certainly able to do that if you want, but I think you really want to go through a competitive process if you're talking for a long term. I mean, if it's like, what do we do in July, we can figure that out. But, long-term, I think it's important, because you're going to have more people in this room if you don't, for one. But, but I think these things can be put in there and when we solicit that interest. And we could probably have some conversations before we officially put an RFP out, just for that purpose, just to make sure we're all talking the same language. I think that's important.
Well, yeah, and I, I tell you what, I mean, it's, I can tell you my, my, I've kind of given a lot of my pros why I like it. My only cons would be is that I don't want to see a whole, you know, we don't have a budget left over for kitchen equipment and, and extreme stuff. So, so a lot of what you were talking about is a positive, because it's not, we're not looking at like major renovations and, and something that is, that we can't afford. And I got to tell you, and, so I'll get back to the cheerleading now. And that is, is that, you know, when I look at Martinelli's has been, I mean, they've been downtown for a long time and has been an anchor in downtown. So when I think of, geez, is it going to do damage to, you know, is it going to be an enhancement or a detriment to downtown? I think it's beneficial, just due to the fact that, you know, you've had a lot of faith and, and commitment to downtown. I don't think you're looking to undermine your own success.
No, I just want to make it better, yeah.
Right.
Two, two questions. One, what's the minimum size gathering a tournament that you could see yourself making it worthwhile to show up for?
At this point in time, since it's a brand-new, this thing's brand-new, it's like, I, you know, there's no historical data on it. Let's, you know, besides, you know, I probably wouldn't open up the operation for a practice or something like that. But during the first year, let's hit everything, you know? If it's a, if it's a small tournament, let's be there, or small, whatever's going on, anything that's going on, let's be there, let's be open, let's, let's put our product out there. Let's see what, you know, we've just got to go from there, you know? And, you know, being the private company, you're going to take, you know, you're, you're the one taking all the risk. So, hey, you know, if it doesn't work out, okay, next year, you know, that's something you can look at down the road, it's like, hey, you know, these small things, maybe we cut down the menu, we just do this. But, you know, that's something we've worked with the city, it's like, hey, do you want the full operation all the time? I mean, the first year I would, any op, you know, anything coming in, let's have, let's have it all open. Let's, everything's on display, we're putting everything out there, you know? That's, that's my feelings. That's how I'd approach it.
Would it be... If, if the city, I guess, which option was this?
This is discussion.
Right. I mean, if the city was running it, Parks and Recs running it, but contracting out for the larger events only, would that be a feasible business model for you? If, if we set, you know, a certain size event where we...
I wouldn't want that, no. But I'm flexible enough, I'd take it, just because, you know, I, you know, that's the line of business we're in. I want to, you know, I'm a resident of Salina, I want to be a part of this, I want to see this, I want to see this thing work out. And any piece I can get, I'd go after it, just to make it better. But, you know, I think, you know, small or large, I think you just stick with the same group, you know?
So we would have to agree what, where that minimum for, we agree practices, probably would. And who knows, if the building's running out all day and everything's being used for practice, it might not be a bad day to be there.
Yeah, I mean, anything to make money. I mean, you know, anything to maximize your revenue. And that first year, that's, that's the, that's the whole thing, nobody really knows.
Now, under your plan, would the city receive any percentage of...
Yeah, we could work a deal, what, kickback percentage, we provide all the restaurant equipment that's needed, you know, taking a look at the space and, you know, the electrical and everything else, we could provide all that. I'm, you know, what I'm usually going to is a five-year contract, a one-year base with four option years. At the end of every year, you can tell me, you know, you don't have to renew or extend that option, you can say, "Hey, we had you for one year, that's too much, you guys, we're going to go with someone else." But, or it's like, hey, we like what you're doing, let's renegotiate this, let's go. But the only reason, you know, with the initial investment of the kitchen equipment and everything else, you know, it's like, it'd be nice to know, hey, we're going to be around for more than one year, because that first year, you're probably going to take a loss, because you're going to be staffing at some events where, you know, we came up zero on it. It's like, no, you know, no one made any food, no one was, you know, no one was there for that. But, you know, it'll be offset by some of the bigger tournaments where, okay, we made some money here, covers that loss here.
You know, just, just one last question on sort of, kind of turnover. I mean, because it sounds like there's going to be people coming in and out of this place a lot. When we have the lobby, and whether you're doing hot dogs or you're doing other stuff, people are going to be sitting down at tables and messing them up. Are we counting on people cleaning up their own messes? Or are we planning on having, in the concession stand model, we going to have our food service component cleaning up tables and picking up garbage and emptying garbage cans and stuff? Because I see that as a traditional part of food service.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you're, you're cleaning up the mess, too.
Yeah, I, I would put that in there, I mean, that's...
I mean...
Do you know?
Not to, not to demonstrate that I may have given up on the human spirit, but I don't expect anyone to clean up their mess.
Yeah, I don't either.
Right. Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dong.
But I mean, it's just a, a number of things that I think are, are worth, sort of, the whole comprehensive approach.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
We need to get on to our next, thank you, Mr. Dong.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We need to get on to our next 7.4. Is that enough discussion, or do you need anything else?
I think Travis wanted a drum.
Thanks, we...
Thank you, Commissioners. Travis Shaly, Recreation Superintendent. I just wanted to add that we're still in the infancy stages of scheduling tournaments and everything, but in the discussions I've had so far, that concessions was a, a big hit hook of them coming here or not, if they get a, a part of that, or, you know, a private group using it, or whatever. But, so, got a few coming up here and then some in, in the winter, but that, that was one of the first questions they asked, was concessions, how can they generate some revenue to offset the, the rental of the facility?
We're probably going to learn as we go.
You bet.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Commissioners, we will, well, we've had good discussion, but I would like some more formal direction as to where you, what you'd want to do, because if we leave with just the discussion, we won't know where, really where you stand. Appreciate the questions. So I would like some direction as to what you would like us to do. Now, with that said, if you say private, we'll have, we're going to be ad-libbing here for a while, because that's a process, both of them are actually processes that take time, but we'll, we'll have to pull what we can together for July events, and I don't, maybe possibly even August. But what we're talking about is the model we want to really try to apply long-term. So it would be helpful if you could come to a consensus and let us know what that is, and then we'll know for sure what we need to do.
Not consensus, but I would just state the opinion that we ought to stay with the given track, the original model, and at least for the time being, until we get some experience under our belt, and also see what the clients of the building itself are looking for from the concessions and maybe other aspects of the building. So we can always go to the concession model, the private concession model at a future time. But I, my vote would be with staying with the, the original approach.
I guess I'd like to... Well, the first thing I wrote down was, boy, I'd like to get the building open first. And we, I mean, we, we do have time to set something up, but obviously, if we were to explore options, it would have, we'd have to include arrangements for event sponsors to share in concessions, since that seems to be a popular incentive to get folks to book. But I don't know that we have to rush it. As long as we have something there come July, maybe the five of us up there selling.
Commissioner Davis, what's your, are you saying start in-house and evaluate? Are you saying you realize that we will have to something in the interim, whatever that is?
I'd like to keep it in-house right now with the option of, you know, ideally contracting out for bigger events, you know, that's risky business for the, the food vendor, just to get a few events under our belt.
The big events are good for a food vendor, because that's where you get the volume. So that's not a bad thing necessarily. It's the small events that you can't necessarily make, have enough sales, grow sales to get where you want to be with the overhead, that are usually a little bit more difficult.
And I would say, I, I agree with Commissioner Blanchard in that I don't particularly want to be in the, the food service business. However, if this is the model that staff has been presented with and, and staff thinks that it's implementable, I feel like we ought to give them the chance to run the model that they want to run and see where it gets us. I mean, we may be someplace else in six months, it may, you know, we may have trouble with staffing or supply or whatever. But I'd at least like to give them the chance to, to have that autonomy and to, to go with that.
I'm just thinking, it might be attractive to some tournaments to have the upscale food.
Yeah, well, I thought a $12.5 million fieldhouse was supposed to attract tournaments. I didn't know it was the concession that was the big attractor. I don't want to be in the food service business. I think we're, I think we're already going to experience operation, operational shock at how much it's actually going to cost to run that facility. And I think that any help that we can get from the private sector to say, "Listen, you don't have to bear that cost," right now in an operational model that I think is going to be more than we're expecting, I think, you know, I think we may end up being at, at a private-run model, but it sounds like you got three for your public. But I, I don't want to be in the food service business. And I think our Parks and Rec people are great, and they got their hands full with a lot of stuff, and I don't want their hands being full with, with, with food service. But if it's, if it's, if it's the view of the board, then I'm supportive of that.
It's not, no, I just soon see what the two options, I, I can live with either one, because I'm going to be the one hoping he's bringing vegetable lasagna and salad and fruit there. Because there's nothing I can eat on a local restaurant that you get at most concessions, you know? So I'm intrigued by the idea that there'd be some...
The in-house or private, I don't believe, would affect what equipment we're buying today from our perspective. So I don't think that makes any difference, I don't believe. Let me suggest that we come back to this then, and we won't likely have a lot of events this year, because it does take about a year to two years to start really starting to fill that time. So we'll, I presume we'll have more, I don't know how many more we'll have this year going into next, but how about we bring it back in the first quarter of next year? That'll give us a handful of events under our belt, and we'll have a little bit better perspective to report on. And yet it won't be so far out in the future that if you're a private concessionaire, you feel like it's never going to, you're never going to get an opportunity to revisit the issue. So if we, if we do, if it is your consensus to start in-house, come back and revisit it first quarter next year. Does that sound good? Big acceptable?
Sounds good to me.
Because truly, when we look at it, this is not a loosely issue for staff. We look, there are advantages and disadvantages to both models. And I, I agree with Mr. Dong on, on a lot of that, that, that image, the food quality and so forth, and that's what goes back to what are the priorities? And it's depending on the margins that may or may not actually bring more back to us. The image is important. Those are important things, you brought up good points. So I think it'll give us a chance to just get on our feet, get the doors open, get on our feet and come back and spend some more time really talking about it. And we'll have a little bit more knowledge as we get, when we get to that point as well.
Would three months be enough? I'm, I'm just thinking of the...
I'm afraid they'll be, heck, they might be kind of, I'm not sure, three months, I think their heads will be spinning still in three months. But, like I said, we know we have some, some things going on in July, but if we can, if we can get to the winter time, Parks and Rec is pretty busy all the time. I'd like to try to get with them before the spring hits, because spring's really tough, because you have to start taking care of your outdoor facilities in the spring, and that is another demand on Parks and Rec. So ideally, when I say first quarter, I'm talking about sometime this winter of coming back and having a conversation. What have we learned? What do we think about the options? What, what if, we could use that time talking to some of the private concessionaires as well, Mr. Dong and others. What are other contemplations that are out there as well and bring it back?
I have a point to bring it back in that time, too, if we've got everybody, I don't know what the flashing is. I think if it looks like the bookings really take off and we have a full schedule towards the end of the year, we may want to revisit it.
We may in that, we may in that, say, this is a big event, maybe it's something we want to try something out anyway, and it's a possibility as well. So it gives us some, some flexibility to, to mess around with it here for just a short time and then come back and, I think, be a little bit better educated on the whole thing and what we want to do.
We'll, we'll hope we have some, several big events. Okay.
It'd be nice. Thank you.
Is that enough?
I think so. If you guys are, yeah, if you're, yeah.
Okay, now, all these gentlemen that have been waiting so long, we'll get to item 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 17-7464, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company Incorporated and CAS Constructors LLC for Phase 1 of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project, Project Number 70019.
Martha.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The 2010 raw water supply study evaluated the city's existing water supply sources and identified sustainable alternatives to meet the city's water supply needs, including drought conditions through the year 2060. The short-term capital improvements included the downtown well field improvements, which are completed, and the project we're talking about today, the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. The South Well Field and Water Treatment Improvement Feasibility Study recommended redrilling and rehabilitating the existing wells, raw and finished water piping, and a 3.5 million gallon per day lime softening water treatment facility. The study also evaluated the feasibility of an alternative reverse osmosis treatment option. The estimated project budget, including construction, engineering, and land acquisition is 3.1, or 31.7 million for lime softening and 36.9 million for the reverse osmosis treatment option. The city commission agreed to allow staff to move forward with the progressive design build delivery method and to have HDR act as the owner's representative and be an extension of city staff. Request for qualifications for a design build team to complete the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant was issued and five companies submitted Part 1 Statement of Qualifications. A five-member selection team utilized a formal scoring evaluation process and selected three design build teams for interviews. Each of those teams was provided a confidential meeting to where they can come in and speak specifically about the project. specifically about the project, and then based on what they learned at that time, they each submitted Part II of the Statement of Qualifications. Interviews were held with the three teams. Again, we used a formal scoring process, and to select the top-ranked team, SOQ Part I and Part II, and the interview were evaluated to determine the top-ranked team. The selection committee selected Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company and CAS Constructors LLC for the project. That was based on their team approach. Kansas Department of Health and Environment, relationship and experience, contractors' experience working in Salina. Design team had done many projects together, and their safety history and change order history were outstanding. The South Well Field Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project will be executed in two phases. Phase one is the project that we're talking about today. Prepare a design up to 60 percent, complete and develop a lump sum proposal. Phase two completes the design, construction, and post-construction tasks if the City Commission approves the lump sum proposal. The agreement is based on the Design-Built Institute of America standard documents and has been modified for this project. The design-build team, HDR staff, city staff, legal counsel, risk manager, and anything, anybody else you might think of have been involved in this review. And it has been a detailed review. And as you noticed, it was a fairly thick document, so plenty of, plenty of work to do there. This is our first time using the Design-Built Institute of America documents, so we were very careful to make sure that they're thorough and correct. The scope of work clarifies and describes the services to be provided for Part One. Basically, it's preliminary design, pre-construction services, and working towards that lump sum proposal. The schedule includes a notice to proceed, hopefully today, with the lump sum proposal by March of 2018. The basis of payment is written on the basis of actually, actual hourly rates and reimbursable expenses with a not-to-exceed amount of $1,964,525. I need to note that in the event the city and the design-build team are unable to agree on a lump sum price, the design-build team will establish a guaranteed maximum price that's based on a 90 percent design. Additional effort required to advance to that point and prepare that proposal will be treated as additional services and subject to additional costs. That'd be similar to taking you to a design-bid-build type of plans. The South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project is included in our major capital improvement program at a cost of $32 million. The project will be funded through the Kansas Public Water Supply Low Fund and repaid through our Water and Wastewater Fund. Approval of the proposed agreement only obligates the city to the Phase One design-build services with a not-to-exceed amount of $1,964,525. Friday, when we sent the package out to you, we still had just a couple of items that we were working through, and prior to your recommendation, I would like to ask Aaron Martin to provide you an update on those items. He has been involved from the beginning on the contract documents, and appreciate all of his efforts. And basically, these changes are really due to some last-minute negotiations that we completed this morning, so.
Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As Ms. Tasker mentioned, following the distribution of the agenda materials, on Friday, we had approximately five changes that we finished negotiating this morning. I wouldn't characterize them as significant by any means, but we did want to disclose them, because they will be reflected in the final agreement that we asked that the parties signed. And so I believe the city clerk provided a short summary of what those changes look like, but I wanted to hit them really quickly, and I'd be happy to talk in further detail. But the first one relates to Section 1.1, and we simply clarified that of the 25-page attachment that's called the general conditions, only certain parts of that are actually incorporated into this preliminary design and engineering agreement, not all of it. The rest will be relevant to the construction phase. In Section 9.81, we modified some language relating to the city's right to request and received copies of the design builder's insurance policies. And we just clarified after further negotiation what exactly the city could request and have rights of access to. We added one spreadsheet to Exhibit D that further details the components of the total compensation to be paid to the design builder. It just adds additional details, but it does not change the price. We added an Exhibit D document that is required due to the funding sources and the governmental funding that we're receiving for this project, related to disadvantaged business enterprise subcontractor participation. We're told by our owner's representative that that's an additional requirement for this project, so we simply added it. And then finally, in the Exhibit F, relating to insurance requirements, we made a very small clarification relating to the obligation to, of the design builder to maintain certain insurance beyond completion of the project. So that's the five changes, and I would be happy to answer any questions about those. If not, thank you.
I got a quick, just on the second, on the second item, what section was that, were you referring to on that one? The one about the right of access to insurance policies?
Yes, that was Section 9.8.1C.
Section 9.8.1?
Subsection C, yes.
And then it was Schedule D, Exhibit E?
There wasn't existing Exhibit D.
Exhibit, okay.
And that, that's what outlined the design builder's hourly rates to be charged. We added a spreadsheet to that, that provides an estimate of the fees attributable to each subtask within the overall project.
Were those the, those were the documents that were at our?
Yes.
Did you not get one of those?
Yeah, I got that. I was just making a note here, just in case it comes in handy later. So number four was, was related to Exhibit?
The, after the.
Funding sources related to disadvantaged businesses?
Yes, that was an additional federal government form that was required to be attached to the existing governmental forms that we'd already attached as Exhibit E.
Okay, as Exhibit E.
Yes.
And then Exhibit F was the one where you had to maintain insurance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the recommendation, staff has identified three options for the City Commission to consider. Option one is approved Resolution Number 17-7464, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company Incorporated and CAS Constructors LLC as a joint venture for Phase One of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project Number 70019, with a not-to-exceed amount of $1,964,525. Option, or item two would be deny Resolution Number 17-7464, resulting in rejection of the proposed agreement and engineering scope and services. Three, instruct staff regarding amending the proposed agreement and engineering scope of services. Staff recommends option one. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have, and I have our design-build team and HDR staff available, so I think we're prepared for whatever question you might have.
I think you guys did a great job at the study session last week.
I was going to say the same thing. Hate to make him sit here all this time, but if he hadn't done such a great job before, we'd have had questions for you.
And I'm sorry to make you sit through the presentation, but I wanted to give something for the public to hear about our project.
Right, well, I was just pleased that the changes that were made were, didn't have anything to do with the, all the information that we had gathered last week, and it looked like it was just housekeeping stuff, so.
They really were, but we wanted to get the full document in front of you, so you weren't, would not be surprised to the later date.
Lots of federal forms in here.
Right. And just, just a question I think will come up in just, in just a minute, but just to, just to ask, as far as like any sort of public, public input process, will that be available? Will there be a channel by which, if there are any questions from the public, they'll be able to, there'll be a proper channel for them to operate in?
We'll, we'll always answer any questions that the public has. They would provide those questions to me, and I'll coordinate with our design-build team, whether it's an engineering question or a contractor question. We'll be more than glad, and we may look at some type of video to kind of keep track of our construction site, to have information out and available to the public. That's probably a surprise to my team, but that's something I'd like to add to this project.
But as always, I just want to emphasize that we're, with staff, we're an open, open process, that if there are questions or concerns, that bring them to you, and you can make sure that they're properly addressed.
We'd love to talk about our project.
You don't mind that at all, do you, Martha? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action. Is there any public comment here? Okay, sure. Come on up to the microphone, give your name and your address, please.
My name's Jerry Duran. I'm a board member of Water District Number Two. I live at 5353 East Magnolia Road. Thank you for the time. Sounds like a big project, but we've been out there at Water Board Number Two for quite a while. We haven't heard anything other than what we read in the paper. I understand there was a problem in 206, which I do sympathize with you. I just wonder if there's any consideration given to the amount of wells being drilled out there. Our water wells are within two miles of the proposed site you have said. We don't know whether that'll affect our aquifer and any private wells that people have, and we service about 175 people. Whether that effect will be drawn on them, we're just concerned about the water there. We understand that it's, there's a need that's possibly needed for a backup. We would like to be included in that process. If there's any concerns that we may have too, that we can deal with ourselves, we don't have a backup plan. We'd have to carry a bucket of, into town and get it filled and take it back home. And I understand that Salina is well-populated, but we have, we're your neighbors. We'd like to be part of the plan too. At least be aware of what's going on, and do we have any rights on restrictions so that we would have water for ourselves?
I think Martha Tasker should be able to answer most of those questions for you. Do you know, Mr. Gage, if there's any?
That was a pretty big pop quiz. Well, first of all.
Nobody's ever came to us or even informed us, you know, we've been there.
We just want, you just want to have some information, I'm sure.
We'd like some information.
And to be included.
How's it going to impact the aquifer? And, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of people with their own private wells that are unaware that it could affect them. Like I said, we're within two miles of that treatment plant that's been there. The wells were closed at one time, and now they're going to reopen them, and how's that going to affect us?
Yeah, the first question is on communication, and we need to include, certainly include them in the overall communication. We'll do that. That's our mistake. Secondly, there's been a lot of evaluation of the water there. I'm pretty confident we would know the answer to that and that there wouldn't create an impact, but I think we need to ask the question, make sure, so that you're sure of it as well.
Just make sure that we have, the clerk has your full name and address, and your telephone number and everything, and Martha Tasker also.
Okay.
Okay? So you can get all that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 17-7464, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company Incorporated and CAS Contractors LLC as a Salina joint venture for Phase One of the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project, Project Number 70019, with a not-to-exceed amount of $1,964,525. Nine, 1 million, not 9 million, 1 million, 964,525. I stumbled through that one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 177464. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming and sitting a long, long time. Yes, and everyone, and Martha too. I can already see you, Martha, there. Okay.
We won't consider it rude if you want to leave.
We don't, we don't say those big names, numbers like that very well. Just don't do it too much.
But it is another code issue if you'd like to stick around.
Thank you, anyway. 7.5, please.
We need a concession stand here.
Yeah, it was getting that way. 7.5, please.
Item 7.5, Amendment of Standard Traffic Ordinance, fine for seatbelt violation, 7.5A, First Reading Ordinance Number 17-10891. 7.5B, declare compelling public purpose exists to allow second reading on the same day. And 7.5C, Second Reading Ordinance Number 17-10891.
Mr. Bangston.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you can see, I'm subbing for Christina Trocheck, the city prosecutor today. Unbeknownst to her, she's on vacation. Matter came up Friday, as you probably noted, this was added to your agenda. Alyssa from the League reported both to the city clerks and the city managers that there was this matter of a change, legislative change in the fine for a seatbelt violation from $10 to $30. This does involve one of our codes that you incorporate by reference, that's the standard traffic ordinance. It currently provides for that $10 fine, and in order to make the amendment to $30, we do need to provide for an additional amendment to our version, our 2016 version of the standard traffic ordinance. So we have presented you with an ordinance that adds a Section 38.1A that sets out Section 182.1 of the standard traffic ordinance in full. The only modification is the change in subsection D2, to make that fine $30 instead of $10. So that's the proposed ordinance, and be happy to answer any questions. We, with that effective date of July 1, we have suggested that you might want to go ahead on a first and second reading today on this, that would, with publication presumably on Friday, have it in effect in anticipation of the first.
For the Fourth of July.
Yeah, and for the Fourth.
Happy Fourth of July. Joy your independence.
You're right.
Other than that, it should be 300 instead of 30. It's a good, it's a good rule.
Speaking like the true doctor that he is.
Well, if you read the newspaper, you know, those who get to the hospital wearing seatbelts, those who don't ejected from the car not wearing seatbelts.
Not good.
So they get to one of the two of us.
I was going to say, I think we're getting touchy.
Public?
Public, well, public comment?
Stick out a turn.
Mr. Holmes?
Randall Holmes, Salina, Kansas. I am not totally against increasing the fine for not wearing seatbelts, even though occasionally I am guilty and probably should be ticketed. But I do think going from $10 to $30 is an outrageous increase in one jump. We keep talking about wanting Salina to be an affordable city, and to reflect some conservative viewpoints, at least as far as expenses are concerned occasionally, and that, and tripling the cost of a ticket in one jump, I feel is just a ridiculous percentage increase. And that's what I've got to say.
Isn't the jump, isn't the jump from the state, I mean, isn't that a state law?
I'm sorry, I wasn't adequately clear on that. This is a matter of state laws.
State law, yeah.
So we're not, yeah.
Senate Bill 89.
Yeah.
Well, you're being at the state senate.
Actually, it's a very cost-effective move. For every person who gets to the ICU because they didn't have their seatbelt on, your taxes that go up from Medicaid go up a huge amount over time. This is a very cost-effective move. Plus, it's something everybody has control over once they get in the car.
That's why I said I wasn't against it.
Not high enough.
Okay, is there a, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve an ordinance Number 1710891, amending Chapter 38, Article 1, Salina code by adding new Section 38.1A, and then. 1, Salina code by adding new Section 38.1A, amending Section 182.1, seatbelts of the standard traffic ordinance.
I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading, Ordinance Number 1710891. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Madam Mayor, I move that we declare a compelling public purpose exists for second reading to occur on the same day.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to declare a compelling public purpose exists to allow second reading on the same day. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 1710891.
Second. I have a motion and a second on second reading, Ordinance Number 1710891. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Yes, do we need a short break?
It wouldn't hurt.
Just take five minutes.
We're going to have a recess for a few minutes?
Next one might be cut off.
Right. Mayor?
Lights were going up and down, I wonder? Hope there's no hail out there.
We're back on the air. Hopefully, if folks are watching at home, they're watching from their basement. So, but we're back on-
We're in the basement here somewhere, okay, but-
We got the thumbs up.
My car's out there. Getting hailed on.
Maybe we're on.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
Moving away from us.
Okay. Did he give me a thumbs up?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll call meeting back to order. Development Business, item 8.1.
Item 8.1, Application Number Z16-6A, requesting an amendment of Article 10, signs and Chapter 42.
Mr. Andrew.
Just as a brief overview or reminder, this first came to you in April with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and you had approved a ordinance on first reading on the 17th of April. On the 24th, after hearing some additional public input, you postponed second reading, directed the city's legal counsel to conduct additional research to determine whether the city could lawfully accept certain categories of signs from the general prohibition on the placement of temporary commercial signs in residential districts. That memo was reviewed by you, and there was additional commission discussion, and on May 15, you referred this subject back to the Planning Commission, and you requested that the Planning Commission work with staff and legal counsel to develop language that would allow for off-site advertising signs and onsite business signs on individual residential lots. This was placed on the Planning Commission's agenda, and they came back with a recommendation, and that involved some deletions of the term garage sale, open house, and real estate sign from the definition section, and then modifications to the primary section there, Section 42508, to create an exception to the general prohibition on advertising signs that would allow one temporary advertising sign up to four square feet in area and four feet in height to be placed on a residential lot from 6:00 a.m. Friday to 6:00 p.m. Sunday. I do want to clarify in that, there was some question about whether that required staff to determine whether there was, in fact, an open house or garage sale or something in the vicinity, and it does not, because the, basically, there is just a window of time from 6:00 a.m. Friday to 6:00 p.m. Sunday where a property owner can have, either allow or place themselves, a temporary advertising sign. So it's not limited to open house or garage sale. It could be any type of advertising sign during that window. The proposed amendment also created an exception to allow one additional temporary business sign to be displayed on a property where construction activities of any type are being actively performed on the property, and that sign could stay up for 30 days after cessation of the construction activities. Again, it could be an additional sign, and it could have nothing to do with the business performing the construction on the property, but it is an additional opportunity to have a sign. So the one, one thing about the option two is that it does have a cumulative effect. So you, as a homeowner, you can always have your base two signs, so you could have a vacation Bible school sign and a fundraising run sign in your front yard, and then if your home was on the market for sale, you could have an additional sign for that. And if it so happened that you were also having a garage sale, you could have an additional sign for that. And if it so happened that as your home was for sale and you were having a garage sale, that you were having construction activity on the property, you could have an additional sign for that. And if your neighbor was having a garage sale or some, you wanted to have an advertising sign, you could have an additional sign for that from 6:00 a.m. Friday to 6:00 p.m. Sunday. So that is, it's a cumulative effect with an overall cap of six signs at any one time. So that is a little more complex than option one, which essentially only allows for the onsite real estate sign and the onsite garage sale signs and no off-site signs. And then we have presented for you a third version, based on your decision to postpone consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation, which was version two. We have summarized for you on Page 2 and 3 the three different options, with the third option being no distinction between commercial and non-commercial signs. You could have a specified number of signs on your property regardless of what they say, subject to whatever size limits you deem appropriate, and then up to four additional signs during election season. So in other words, rather than being cumulative like option two, under option three, you would specify a base number of temporary yard signs. No one would be concerned about what event or activity they were tied to or what they were advertising, and we would simply check a property to see if it exceeded the allowable number of signs. So as you think about that in your mind, well, number three may seem like it is more liberal than number two, because it allows for any type of sign, commercial, non-commercial, regardless of content. In some ways, number three is actually, option three is, can be construed as more restrictive because it puts a cap on the number of signs, whatever you think is appropriate. So if you think that the appropriate maximum number of temporary yard signs should be three or two, then one would never expect to see more than that number of signs in a residential yard unless it was election season. So we have Mr. Berger there at the ready to put up versions of these ordinances electronically if there's any specific areas you want to look at, but we did our best in the description of your options to summarize those. So again, option number one was based on the original Planning Commission recommendation, and the concern about option number one is that many people in the community do put out open house, off-premise signs and off-premise garage signs as a matter of practice, and under option two, those would not be allowed for. The only signs that you could have would be related to activities taking place on your own property. Option two is, allows for more types of signage, but still doesn't open up residential areas to unlimited advertising signs. And option three would open up neighborhoods to unlimited advertising signs, but it would do so on a limited basis by restricting the total number of signs. So from an enforcement and administration standpoint, from staff's perspective, option one and option three are the, are the simplest and cleanest. Option two is definitely more complex, and as you indicated last year, last week, it takes time to understand how exactly option two would work. So with that, we would be open to any questions that you have about your three options, and we'd be happy to display version one, version two, or version three on the screen if you have specific language you want to look at. There's a lot of strike-throughs under option three because the ordinance becomes much, much shorter with much less language, with fewer exceptions when you're looking at version number three. So with that, we'll be open to any specific questions.
Three questions, probably for you and the city attorney at the same time, but they're just quick yes, no, quick. For zoning purposes, is deciding to prohibit commercial signs in residential areas consistent with the Supreme Court decision? Was that allowed?
Yes, it is lawful to distinguish between commercial and non-commercial speech to the extent that the city has, the city is able to identify a substantial governmental interest in doing so. So some well-recognized reasons for doing that would be to maintain traffic safety, aesthetics, and the residential feel of neighborhoods. So it is possible to distinguish between commercial and non-commercial speech, yes.
Okay, that eliminates the need to ask question number two. And number three, does the, does Supreme Court ruling specify that a house-for-sale sign has to say "house for sale"? Because under our ordinance, that sign did not have to say "house for sale."
There's not a case that directly addresses that issue. What we have is several cases that, that speak to the government's ability to distinguish between types of speech, and particularly types of commercial speech. And there's a test called intermediate scrutiny that must be satisfied if you're making content-based distinctions between types of commercial speech. So if we're allowing some, some commercial speech but not others, we need to satisfy that intermediate scrutiny test. We were, we did mention that there is a Supreme Court decision that basically says you're safe if you make an exception for onsite real estate signs because of the uniqueness of those signs and the messages that they convey in relation to where they are placed. So there is essentially a case that says there's a safe harbor for making an exception for that type of sign. As we drift towards potential exceptions for other categories of signs, we must run the test of that intermediate scrutiny test.
So that would imply that the sign would have to say "house for sale" in so many words?
If, if the ordinance, the ordinance could, could stipulate that that's the only type of message allowed on the sign, it could say that. It doesn't have to. It would actually promote more speech and probably be favored by a court if you opened it up and said it could display other messages. But we do have the legal cover to specify that it must display the "for sale" message.
Okay, but would it be fair to say that if we had an ordinance that said you can have two non-commercial yard signs, but real estate signs are prohibited, we could be challenged if we completely prohibited real estate signs?
Yes, there is precedent that that would be inappropriate to do.
Okay, I had a little algorithm, and I think those got me through my decision-making tree. Thank you.
But if you look at option three, option three doesn't say anything about that, because option three says you get X number of signs and we don't care what they're for.
All right, I made a note here. I want to run a scenario by you and tell me why it won't work, okay? Or what the risks involved with it are. I'm looking at option, I'm looking at ordinance, the first ordinance, okay? The first run that we had, the ordinance. And if I go to Section 4, A3, subsection 4, clear at the bottom of the page, okay? And it talks about placing these temporary, two additional temporaries in what in essence is non-residential zones, okay?
Where are you again?
I'm in Section 4, letter A, 3-
Okay.
-4.
Got you.
The two additional yard signs may be placed and displayed on property located, and it's referring to what I perceive as any, construction activities, okay? So that would be covered under construction signs in the definitions, correct? And that's an architect, engineer, contractor, artisan, whatever, as part of that. So just with that in mind, and if I go to Section 4, C3, it ends at number three, which is basically one, two, and three are real estate sign, open house sign, garage sale sign, all onsite. Would it be possible to have a number four on that for an on, once again, onsite, a construction sign that would read similar to the one in the non-residential zones? That basically says that the, and allow one additional yard sign be placed and displayed on property located in any RSR, R1, R2, R2.5, R3, or MH zone when construction activity of any type are being actively performed on the property. This additional temporary sign may be displayed no earlier than the date on which a building permit is issued for the project and shall be removed no later than seven days after completion of the construction project. What, by, by kind of almost bringing that, mirroring the language in the non-commercial into the, or from the commercial into the residential, if it's onsite, construction sign worded the exact same way that the non-residential sign is, where is, where, where does the risk come in?
Well, the, the initial language that you read from, I want to make sure we're on the same page, Section 42508, subsection A34.
Right.
That, that strictly addresses the quantity of signs allowed in those districts, which are essentially, as you mentioned, non-residential districts. That, that addresses the quantity of signs, doesn't, doesn't speak to the message. So with that said, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, your question is, would it be possible to, as we get down to subsection C3, and then we, we create certain exceptions from the general prohibition on commercial signs, would it be possible to create an exception that accommodates construction signs using, and as, as you referred back to that language that I said earlier, A34?
On, onsite only? When that, and during the time of the construction?
Yes.
Just that same?
It, it would be possible to create an exception. I would likely recommend looking to the option two ordinance, so the ordinance we've been referring to as option two, if, if there's a desire to do that. That, as you may re- That, as you may recall, allows construction signs by accommodating them in a content-neutral way. It says, it clarifies or states that construction signs fall within the category of onsite business signs. And then it goes on to say that an onsite business sign is allowed during the period of construction on, on, on a property in a residential district. And so I, I think you could borrow, if there were a desire to do so, you could look to ordinance number two, and that specific language where we, where we crafted a way to allow construction signs and other signs, other business signs as well.
Right, but, but, and that's what I'm getting at, is that there is the end every other type of business sign on or on and off-site during that particular timeframe?
To the extent we're able to, to take the position that a construction sign is a business sign, we could allow business signs without opening up the door to offsite advertising signs.
Okay.
But there, we would not recommend creating an exception solely for construction signs and no other commercial signs unless there's a, unless there's a basis for distinguishing that category of signs.
Okay, and much like Dr. Davis, I was just looking to, to just solidify kind of where I am and make sure I'm not misunderstanding anything, but that's the, that's the rub on that, and I appreciate the clarification. Okay, thanks.
I did want to share that Chris Ross, one of the Realtors who attended your April 24th meeting and spoke to this, was not able to attend, but he did email us to share that he supports version two or option two of the options that were presented.
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we get the ball rolling on this thing?
Well, I think so.
And Mayor, if I could add one, one point, as you probably observed, the, the three variations of the ordinance are included in the agenda packet. They all have the same ordinance number, except at the end of each one, there's a hyphen one, hyphen two, or hyphen three. And those correlate with the, the versions of the ordinance as we've been referring to them as option, option one, or option two, or option three. It's only, option one, because it's already been approved on first reading, is ripe for potential consideration on second reading if there's a desire to, to go that route. The other two options have not yet been approved on first reading. It's only necessary to take action on one of the ordinances, but to, to clarify for the, for the record that we are choosing from among a menu of options, I would just recommend that if a motion is made, that it begin by, among the three options, I move and then refer to the appropriate numbers, or words to that effect, just so that it's not necessary to clarify that it's necessary to kill the other ordinances or, or take action on them.
Um, just one thing, if we're going to, and be delighted if we took action on this, just from my own perspective in looking, and I think everybody knows where I'm coming from on this, I kind of feel like Goldilocks. Option one, I really feel is too restrictive and does not give people enough leeway to use their property as they would like. Number two, staff, as indicated, is going to be too difficult to enforce and creates, in my mind, so many exceptions that it's difficult for me to get my head around them, let alone figure out how we enforce it. And I am in favor of option number three because I think it has the best potential for enforcement. It's also the most liberal. If we determine in two years or five years' time that it was too liberal, we can always go back and restrict it as we need to. So that's, that's where I'm at on.
I would like to say I agree with Commissioner Hodges on the point she made, and then also that number three, as I'm understanding it, we have less total signs.
Potentially, yeah. We started with a base of two, and so what, if you assume a base of two, then it's up to the homeowner to decide how they want to use those two, except during election season. And you may decide that the base should be three, that is your prerogative, but we just started with a base of two, saying you can have your real estate sign and some non-commercial opinion sign, or you can have your real estate sign and your neighbor's garage sale sign, but we're going to let you choose how you want to use your allocation. But from an enforcement standpoint, obviously, if you have a cap that said you can have two temporary yard signs, it's much easier from an enforcement standpoint to go out and said, we have a report of five temporary yard signs on this lot. It's fairly easy to say you have more than two and you need to remove three of those.
Well, I, if aesthetics are any part of this, I think that's one aspect of it as well, is not having the potential.
Aesthetics are no part of this.
We sort of trampled that.
For me, if the real estate sign must say "house for sale," then I can see treating it separately. If it doesn't have to say "house for sale," for me, the easiest thing is you get two or three signs, it really doesn't matter if you want one of them to say "house for sale." And I'm guessing most people selling a house aren't going to have too many other signs in their yard anyway because they don't want to alienate buyers. But you get your three signs, and, you know, you could allow commercial or not allow commercial, whichever would be the, the will, but it, keep it very simple and just not distinguish. I would just assume limit commercial if that's acceptable under the.
The advantage of three is that it does take some of the questions about, I want to put up a sign that says my motorcycle's for sale. I want to put up a sign that advertises my security system. Under option three is, we don't care if you do that as long as the number of temporary yard signs you have doesn't exceed this number. And so under option three, there's nothing even there that refers to a real estate sign or real estate for sale because that's up to the homeowner to decide whether they want to use their allocation to have such a sign, and as long as it meets the height limitation and the square footage limitation, a real estate for sale sign or for lease is just fine.
Right. You know, I, I cut out a piece of, well, I have a piece of wood in my basement that's two feet by four feet. That's a pretty big sign if you wanted to use it in one chunk of wood for a front yard. I know you all had measured the real estate sign, did, most of them came under six square feet as opposed to eight?
Most of them are under five square feet, but when you do get the things like the riders, like price reduced, or new, new price, or a rider for the individual Realtor, then you can get up in the range of eight square feet. And those, the particular sign also, the different style of sign, the swing sign, is a, is a larger sign as well. So under option three, the cap is the same as it is under option one, which is you can't exceed six feet in height, you can't exceed eight square feet in area, and under option three, all you would have to decide is what you think is the appropriate maximum number of residential yard signs, whether it's two, or whether it's three, or whether it's a different number.
And we touched on this a meeting or two ago, but I think it's noteworthy that for the purposes of enforcement, the way we measure the square footage of a sign is a box around the text. So you may see a swing sign, as Ms. Randall described, and it may feel like it's bigger than six square feet, and the entire structure may be, but it's the sign text area that gets measured for code enforcement.
So the piece of wood this letter is on could actually be larger than eight square feet, then?
Correct. We're not measuring the post, we're not measuring the, the arm that the sign hangs from, we're measuring around the, the message of the sign itself.
But not, but not the piece of wood that it's on? Is that correct?
Well, we're not, we're going to look, we're not going to go out and if, if it's a two-by-four piece of wood, then it's an eight-square-foot sign, unless it's just obvious that only half of that two-by-four area actually has message on it. For, as a rule of thumb, a yard sign, we're going to look at the dimensions of the sign. The only exception to that is on a swing sign that has a post and has an arm, and we're not going to measure the post and the arm, just the sign.
Okay. So is there consensus here about allowing commercial or not allowing commercial and residential?
I don't know if we have a concession, or if we have any kind of agreement here, but I'm just going to go ahead and throw this out there. Madam Mayor, I would move that we adopt version number three of ordinance number 17-10882. This ordinance would be numbered 17-10882-3. This version would allow two temporary yard signs to be placed on an individual residential property regardless of content and regardless of any activities or events taking place on the property with up to four additional signs allowed during election season. As proposed, temporary yard signs on residential lots could not exceed six feet in height or eight square feet in area.
Seven.
I have a motion and a second.
Discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Did you say that was from among three options?
How long before we can have a moratorium on?
Any, any consideration for allowing three to allow for the home alarm sign? Because these would have, those are still considered temporary.
Well, if anything goes, option, that, that option is, everything goes, message-wise, ti, you know, they can stay out however long they want. Yeah, it's.
It's the most liberal.
I don't think you're going to find, I'll just, the, the only comment I'm going to say is that I don't think you're, when we, when we look through all the strategic plan and comprehensive plan goals that talk about, we will create a vibrant and, well, it's, it could be extremely vibrant, I'm just not sure it's the vibrant that we had considered, so.
Vibrancy is in the eye of the beholder.
Anyway, so it's my hope that this pass, that this does not pass.
Now, would your opinion change if commercial and non-commercial were, if, if commercial was limited? Is that the, is that the major?
Yeah, I like, I, I, I like the option that limits commercial, that regulates the commercial spectrum of that speech, to the extent that we can with the new playing field that we've been given.
That would be my preferred, if I was going to alter number three at all, that would be, I didn't know if it was allowable with having, you know, if you have to read a sign to know what, what it is, if, if that rule keeps you from separating the two.
Yeah, I think they'll say if you're going to alter option three, which is totally content-neutral, to somehow limit commercial, you're back into option one or two. I'll wait with the attorneys to see if they nod, but.
I think you would be.
And I'll just, I'll just add this part, if this, if this particular option passes, I think we're going to have potentially some issues with passing other parts of the sign code as well, because I can't imagine how you string out this far and reel that back in with any sort of, I mean, this is pretty much, this is out there, in my opinion, so. Anyway, ready to vote.
What part would you change?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I just, I, I.
Commissioner Davis isn't ready.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go with that. I, I would, I would distinguish between commercial and non-commercial. I would make, I, since I'm allowed that distinction, I would make that distinction because we are talking residential areas.
Right, so, and I guess that was my concern, making that, does making that distinction weaken this option?
We are able to make that distinction between commercial and non-commercial speech. We have not made that in option three. We have made that distinction in options one and two. And options one and two are examples of how you could attempt to make the distinction. There may be other ways, bits and pieces of option one and option two, but it is possible to distinguish between the two broad categories of commercial and non-commercial.
I mean, that would be my preference of the two, but I mean.
Mr. Binkston have a comment? We weren't ignoring you.
That's all right, no, that's fine. It's, it's a minor point, but as Mr. Barton focused on the substance, I assured him that from the back row, I would keep an particular ear out procedurally. Did I understand you, Commissioner Hodges, to refer to the numbering as including a three?
Yes, dash three.
And I just wanted, am I correct, Ms. Wicks, that we probably would not want to number that way? The thought was that just, if we can just identify that from among the three, option three is the, is what you were moving.
I got you, I misunderstood. I thought you wanted that included. Okay.
Small point, but figured the timing was necessary.
So can I amend my motion to retract the dash three?
No, that's why, that's why I stepped up when I did, so that you could do whatever you wanted to.
All right, just, just wanted to make sure.
After listening extensively to the discussion, I just, I want to add one thing, just so you don't forget it in your haste to get something accomplished. Option three does not include the offsite signs, so I'm not sure if you took that into account, or if you want to discuss that maybe before you vote on it. So that's the one other piece that, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, and option three doesn't include that, so.
Well, and to clarify on that, it, there is no, there is no explicit reference in option three to, which says offsite signs are allowed, but the way we addressed it was at the very beginning, I'll have to scroll back here, but at the very beginning of 42508, we indicated that the temporary signs allowed may display any commercial or non-commercial message, so we have not even drawn a distinction between offsite and onsite. By simply allowing any commercial message, we are allowing offsite or onsite, and that is a different approach than how we've parsed the two categories and the other two versions, but it wasn't necessary to parse those two varieties of commercial speech in this version since we are allowing them all.
So number three would allow the corner house to say garage sale half a block up?
Yes.
Or have a Walmart sign near your yard. Sale at Walmart.
I'm hoping the neighbors will self-correct that behavior.
Trust your neighbor.
Trust your neighbors.
Did you want to amend your motion?
I think I, I think I did to subtract the dash three.
Okay, subtract.
Yeah, is the second or, okay with that amendment on the dash three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I have a motion and a second.
Are you allowing public comment? We have a hand raised.
Oh, I didn't see your hand, Randall. Come on out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. You've put a lot of work into considering, reconsidering, sending back, reconsidering, and that is greatly appreciated. You've been listening to the people, and God bless you all for that. I would ask that in the proposal, the motion that's before the floor, that you possibly consider increasing that number of signs to three signs, because even Dean Andrew recognized that two signs is extremely limiting. He mentioned when there's an open house sign, a for-sale sign, there could be no other signs in the yard at all, not even that security sign in that. With that change, number three would be my first choice, because I also recognize my other best choice, number two, has a whole lot of issues with enforcement, and this would solve that. But I ask that you strongly consider changing that number of signs to three as a more reasonable number and practical number to get this maybe addressed and addressed in full today, because if that homeowner has somebody to come out and work on the house and their business sign is in the yard, we couldn't put the open house sign up, or we'd have to take the for-sale sign down, or that business sign down that I don't own when I'm selling property and that. But your help, consideration, and actions are much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I would ask the motion maker to consider increasing the signs from two to three.
I'm, I'm, no, 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 I'm only willing to be so, so liberal, all right? I've stuck my neck out on the whole content-neutral thing, and I've got Commissioner Blanchard on my right predicting Armageddon. I'm, I'm, I'm going to stick with two, unless it's addressed in a, in a completely separate action.
And I'll support you.
And I'll support you in that, and I think if we really found out that people can't choose between two and three, that we might have a crowd back here asking us to increase the numbers of signs, but I think we can try to.
And I agree with that, too, and it has been seconded, hasn't it? Okay?
And for the record, it's sign again.
And this would be on first reading.
I had that coming.
You just come up with it. How good.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign?
Nope.
Okay, we, we passed it anyway.
On first reading.
On first reading. Other business?
Go through this again.
Wait, there's no emergency?
No, there's no emergency.
Well, we never want to hear it for this again. Why be?
There was no compelling interest to speak this out of.
Other business before, if you're going to read a thing for, you know, I just want to make a comment that for folks at home and everyone else, Tim Haran wrote a story in, probably in tomorrow's paper about Schwanz Global and Tony's Pizza. Couple things, one, they're having a employee-type recruitment event at the Tony's Pizza Event Center. I believe that's on Wednesday, but the important thing is, is that they, they've announced, and it's in the paper, that they have increased their hourly wages significantly, quite significantly, and then also for the night shift, also increased to two, $2 and, and $3.50 total. I think it's a really, I, I'd like to recognize Schwanz Global and stuff for the, for the commitment they've made, and it's a $5 million annual investment, and I think as we have employers stand up and, and increase their wages and recognize their employees, I think it's important, and I'd like to recognize Tony, Tony's and Schwanz for the effort that they've put forward, and, and with much appreciation.
Here, here.
Yes, that's so true, and we, in fact, I've been talking to some people I know that are looking for a job, so maybe that'll help, anyway. Okay, we request for executive session, nine point one.
Madam Mayor, move to recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene, this is really 45 minutes?
Real quick, Commissioners, we, Greg and I talked, and given we have two different topics, the legal and then the personnel, the thought being, and this is with the guidance of the league, it's not necessarily in statute, but based on that, if you want to stick to that, it'd probably be best just to, to do a motion for the legal, do your action there, come back out, do a motion for the personnel, and then go back in, just if you want to be pretty direct and specific on that.
And 45 minutes for the legal, and?
I think you'll get to 45 minutes pretty fast on just the legal, but it's up to you, if you want to go short, shorter timeframe than that.
So this would be just for the legal counsel, with legal counsel, matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at, got, eight twenty-five? Eight twenty-five. Thought I was reading the clock wrong there first, but okay.
Sir, is that second? Have a motion and a second to request for executive session to discuss legal issues. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, and is there any?
No, there's, there's not anticipated action on either item.